That it is seven o'clock. Let's call this meeting to order. This is the city council meeting for June seventh, twenty twenty-two. And if you don't mind, Janet, could you call the roll, please?
Our council member Diaz.
Yes.
Council member one.
Yeah.
Council member Wolf.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tillman.
You're Mayor Cloven.
I am here. And with that, could you roll the meeting protocol video, please? Item number two. Thank you, Janet.
Due to COVID nineteen, this meeting will be conducted as a Zoom webinar pursuant to the provisions of the A B three sixty-one, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act. This meeting is also being webcast on the City of Clayton's website. The mayor will call upon its council presenter staff and other speakers by name, and ask that they speak clearly and state their names before giving comments or remarks. Persons participating via webcast and Zoom with their cameras enabled are reminded that their activities are visible to viewers. Members of the public participating by Zoom wishing to speak should use the raise hand feature or dial star nine, and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. Telephone attendees will be called upon by the last four digits of their phone number. It is requested that public speakers state their name, but providing such information is voluntary. Written public comments received by the Clayton City Clerk by five P M. Today will be entered into the record, but will not be read out loud. If authors of the written correspondence would like to speak, they are free to do so and should raise their hand, and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. A roll call vote will be taken for all action items. The chat feature is not active. In order to get the full Zoom experience, please make sure your application is up to date.
Thank you, Janet. That ends item number two. And since we are back in virtual mode, Councilmember Diaz, would you mind leading us in the predilections, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. Much appreciated. And let's move to item number four, which is the consent calendar. And if there are any items which a fellow council member would like to have removed or discuss off the consent calendar, please let us know right now.
I would like to have item four H. For Henry discussed.
All righto. Are there any other items that would like to be moved off the consent calendar? All righto. Do we speak on items separately now, or do we come back to go approve this consent calendar? It is and can bring back that back afterwards?
So you will take public comment on the consent calendar except for item H, and then you can accept a motion for all of the consent calendar except item H. And then you can choose when you want that. Item H can be heard right after that or at the beginning of the discussion items, however you wish.
Excellent. If you don't mind, we will go ahead and get to public comment on the rest of the consent calendar. Councilmember Diaz, I would like to move discussion item H until after the recognitions and before city reports, if you don't mind. So we can.
Fine. Thank you.
You bet. Awesome. So let's move this to public comment. Are there any hands raised for the on these items of the consent counter minus item H?
Mayor Cloven, I do not have. Oh, one hand just went up. David, as I promote you to panelists, you will have three minutes to speak if you can unmute your microphone. And this will be for items consent items four A through four G.
For me. Hello, can you hear me now?
David, welcome. You are on. You have three minutes to talk on the consent calendar. Please do.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would like to say good evening to you and the council members. I'm David Boatwright. I'm a resident here in the City of Clayton. And I just wanted to say to all of you, I want to appreciate you for the work that the city is paying for to have done at the intersection of Pine Hollow and Mitchell Canyon. It's being resurfaced right now. However, that being said, I'd also like to state that the paving contractor needs to do a little bit better job with his traffic control. For example, last week, there were some crews out there doing some preliminary work at the intersection. It looked like they were doing some asphalt work around some manhole covers and other things. And they had zero traffic control. They were blocking lanes. And it was that's a busy intersection all day long. And they had no signs up approaching the intersection and didn't have people directing traffic around their trucks that were blocking lanes. So that was last week. And I called last week and spoke to a city staffers and let them know. And they said they would pass that along. And then this week, they started doing the regular paving work, and they had whole lanes blocked off, and they're rerouting traffic through residential neighborhoods, which is fine. I mean, you have to do it. But they didn't have any signage up directing traffic where to go. And I was behind a few cars on Tiffin today, and they looked totally lost. They didn't know where they were going. They didn't know how to get back out to Clayton, where they're creeping along, looking around. They didn't know which way to turn. Cars were going down Kinston and Tiffin. And so I just think that they should have a better job, excuse me, do a better job of putting up some signage. My wife also saw them directing a gravel quarry truck off of Pine Hollow up Panadero, which is a very narrow street. And my wife said, when the driver got to Del Trigo, he had no way, which no clue which way to turn to get to the quarry. So like I said, I think they should have some better signage, maybe in the residential neighborhood, if they're still going to be working. I don't know if they've completed their work or not, but I'd just like to pass that along. Thank you.
David, thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. We will remind the rest of public, we will have a public comment section at item number seven on non-agend items. We are working on our consent calendar right now, which is items A through G on item number four. Are there any other comments on that at this time, Janet?
Mayor Cloven, I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
Thanks. Much appreciated. Let's bring this back to the city council. Is there any discussion or can I get a motion for approval on items A through G?
Should do approve.
A second.
Got a first by councilmember Wolf, a second by Vice Mayor Tillman. Janet, we call the roll, please.
Councilmember Diaz.
Yes.
Councilmember one.
Hi.
Councilmember Wolf.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tillman.
I.
Mayor Cloven.
I. That carries and let's go ahead, if you don't mind it to change of mind, let's go ahead and get on to item number H, the consent calendar, since it's right here right now. And before we move on to item number five, Jim Diaz, councilmember Diaz, you wanted to pull item number H. Would you like to bring and start the start the questions or discussion?
I would like that. I had a my usual pre-city council meeting with the city manager today. And in reviewing this item in particular, the animal control district has reduced their services to us pretty significantly. And in fact, if there are, and correct me if I'm wrong, Raina, but I think for if there is a deceased wild animal, we have to call them on an individual basis for which they charge us a fee over and above the contracted level. And we have to come them out, have them come out and do that. And so quite frankly, it appears that they are reducing their services significantly to us. And I know that every once in a while I do receive a call. In fact, the most recent one that I had was over on Mitchell Canyon where there was, and this was not a wild animal. This was a cat. But it took them a significant time to come out and finally remove the animal. I guess what I would like to do, and I don't know if it's possible, is to have city staff really delve into the the fee structure that the county animal control wishes to charge us. And if we can somehow reduce that, I know we're looking for every nickel and dime and every other area. And I know it'll be a discussion when we get to the budget workshop. But this is one item that I just don't think ought to be blanketly approved. And when they are one, reducing services, two, charging us on a per call basis for what's being characterized as wild animal pickups and so forth. I just think that, and then they want to increase it in year number two. I just find that we need to challenge them and see if there's some way to do. I know we can't do it tonight, but I would just want city staff to go back to the county animal control and see what they can do to bring costs into line. Thank you.
So Councilmember Diaz, I have Beth Ward, Animal Control Services Director on the line, but I will say that, you know, as you point out, the the costs are going up for this. The city managers in the county have actually been working pretty cooperatively with animal services for probably about three years. And prior to that as well, but certainly in the last several years to really frankly, push the county on scrubbing their costs and to share your very much your same concerns regarding the cost increases. And, you know, there the the county is facing cost increases that they need to recoup. And we don't frankly, any of the cities in the county have a particularly good alternative. So we have continued to work with Beth and her staff on, you know, helping keep costs as low as possible, but it has been a real challenge across the board. And I'll offer Beth an opportunity to comment if she'd like to as well in response to your question and comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I appreciate the opportunity to answer your questions that you have on our service agreement. So on the question in regards to additional costs for services as they are rendered, you use an example of picking up a deceased animal. There's not an additional cost to the city for that. That's incorporated into the per capita cost that we have for each city. That is not an additional service. Where there is additional cost is if it is on a person's private property, and they have a request to come and have that wild animal removed from their private property. There then is a a at-cost service fee that is charged to that property owner and not to the city.
Ah, that's that's helpful. And help me a little bit. What do you care? What do you characterize as a wild animal? Is that a coyote? Something in that in that nature, just to be clear.
Correct. A wild animal would basically fall under anything that is not a domesticated animal like a dog or a cat or domesticated rabbit or hamster or something along those lines. So there's generally domesticated animals. There's livestock. And then there's wild animals. So wild animals would be your squirrels, your raccoons, your possums, your coyotes, your turkeys that are out there. So there
There are plenty.
There's there's way too many turkeys in our county, you know, and so that's I hope that helps to define wild animal for you.
Yeah, thank you very much. That is helpful.
Yeah.
And I didn't realize that you direct costed that to the property owner when you're removing that. Okay, thank you.
Correct. And I and I want to underline that our goal here in working with the the city staff and for all cities is to ensure that we're providing a cost-effective, efficient service for our city residents. Our the county is not out here to make a profit. We're just here to cover the cost for what it costs us to provide that services to our city residents. And, you know, if you were to compare, you know, the city of Antioch provides their own animal services. And I think their population is in the neighborhood of about a hundred thousand people right now, maybe a little over. And their cost to provide that service last year was two point two million dollars just for animal services. And it's going up again this year because they're looking at adding four additional staff members to that cost. And so the cost per capita is quite a bit more done through the city. So what we're trying to do is provide you a really cost-effective service at a cost as reasonable for you all to be able to afford.
And and I see that what you're doing is, I mean, you do the central administration of the animal services and then allocate those out as necessary by by city and other other areas. I'm sure because you also use the unincorporated areas. Is I mean, is your staff levels a challenge at this point? I know, you know, because quite frankly, I don't recall the last time I saw a unit out here. But I do remember when this one resident called me when there was a it was a dead feline in front of the property. And we were able to negotiate within a few hours, I guess, that to have the the animal picked up.
Yeah. So this is the whole reason this new service agreement has kind of come into fruition. It's been a multiple year process. But what basically has happened is that, you know, we started having contracts with our cities back in the nineteen eighties. And it was basically at, you know, in the neighborhood of a dollar per capita. And then when we got up to about two thousand and eight, because of the economy, we basically put all of our costs on hold for our cities until about two thousand and fifteen. So we had about seven years, which we started to slip backwards. And what ended up happening is is we didn't have the funding to be able to have enough staff to be able to respond appropriately to things like what you're talking about. So we were seeing delayed in response times, and we were seeing our service levels start to slip and not being able to provide the service that your citizens really do deserve. And so we started having our conversations with the city managers or the police chiefs and also hearing from the residents. And we started to recognize that we needed to make a change. And so we looked at changing our fee structure. So it was a a sustainable plan moving forward. And we wanted to provide an agreement that was very clear in what the services we were providing and also to give performance metrics, because our prior service agreement, which was established back in two thousand and six, that was the last service agreement that was agreed to between the cities and the county. It was a page and a quarter long, and it had no definitions onto what the services were being provided or the measurement and how we would see if we're doing a good job or we're we're doing a poor job. And so in talking with the city managers and chiefs and hearing from the residents, we thought it'd be best to create a more defined service agreement that really kind of codified what we are doing now and putting performance metrics on it so that as we move forward, we could have communications like you could say, well, we have said that we will respond to that service call within two hours. And you we look at our reports and we see that we're doing that eighty-five percent of the time, but our goal is to do it ninety-five percent of the time. So then we can have a conversation with you. Why are we struggling with that? And you can say, what are you going to do to hit these goals? This is what we're paying for. And so we could have good, honest conversations to provide the best service possible. So that's why we're here tonight.
And you have really enlightened me personally so that I can respond better to to our community members that bring up those kinds of issues. And I certainly appreciate that very much. Thank you.
No problem. I appreciate you bringing it up.
Can I ask some questions as well?
Yes.
The the agreement talks about a, what do we call it? In number eleven of the agreement, it talks about performance and activity reports. Are those currently being? Is the information currently being gathered? Or is that a prospective item?
No. So approximately probably three years ago, we started talking with the the city staff in regards to what metrics are you looking for? What can we provide you? We were providing reports all these years, but there were just a bunch of numbers that we threw at you. And there were no really metrics to say, are we doing better than last year? Or are we doing worse than last year? Are we hitting our goals? And so about three years ago, we started talking about what would those metrics look like? And so about, well, almost the same time, three years ago, we changed our our reports that we send to the city managers and police chiefs on a quarterly and annual basis that shows these metrics on the type of service calls, the amount of time that takes for us to respond to those service calls at the different priority levels. And also then, you know, what type of animals are being served? How many calls and what sort of time periods? So all of those data points are already being taken. And I'm always open to to learning more of what our cities are looking for, and we can modify any sort of report to be able to meet that need.
Okay, that's great. When was the last time that the City of Clayton received a report? And for what period did it cover? I'm curious, because I haven't seen one, and that just could be my own ignorance. But I'm not sure if we've if we've had that. We probably have, and I've missed it. So I will go with that.
It's okay.
We do get them regularly. I haven't historically forwarded them to the council. They that we don't get a lot of activity, but I can certainly can do that in the future.
Yeah. And I guess the reason why I ask is because it would be interesting because a lot of the price structure looks like it's it's based on a per capita basis. But if you were to use a different metric and do on a per call basis, I'm wondering what our rate would be and if we would, you know, if that number would be in line with our expectations. So that that I just don't know. I don't have the underlying data to make that inference. So that that's why I'm curious about that.
So if I can respond to you just real quickly. So when I first started in this role in two thousand and fifteen, I thought the same thing. I thought, why would we do it on a per capita basis when we have some cities that actually have more open spaces than others, even though they might have more population? And so is it really fair? So I started looking at it. And I looked, I took a breakdown of the eighteen cities by percentage of of actual population. And I apologize, I should have had it ready for you, but I don't recall what Clayton's is, but let's say that Clayton is two percent of the of the eighteen cities population. And then I would look at your total number of calls and your activities during the same time period. And what I found is that in the majority of cities, if it was two percent of the population, it was about two point two or one point eight percent of the activities. So really relatively close. There are only a couple of outliers, and the outliers were unincorporated areas and the city of San Ramon and the city of Richmond. So
Oh, no. Yeah, I I think
There are some outliers.
Yeah, it could definitely be a good metric. I just I just don't have the information to to conclude, I guess. But I was more thinking, you know, if we have ten calls per year, that it would be a very expensive call versus if we have ten thousand calls per year, then, you know, your your unit cost goes way down. So I I mean, that would be, I think, interesting to understand, to figure out a sense of scale on what our actual call volume and response is. So yeah, if we don't have that handy, that's fine. I would be curious to see it. The other thing was the annual fee, you know, for the the current year, I forget what the current the twenty-three FY twenty-three proposed increase was. But when I look at item thirteen, it shows twenty-three FY twenty-three versus FY twenty-four. And I think that represents like a fifteen-ish percent increase year over year. And then I think it's like another fifteen-ish percent from twenty-two to twenty-three. That's fairly significant.
It is. So and and I again, if I could explain the the reason.
Yeah, sure.
So in in early two thousand and twenty, we put forward a fee increase to our cities that basically brought us back. So so as an organization, we had been losing positions, losing we didn't have the the finances to be able to support the positions that we had. So we were constantly cutting positions which were affecting service levels. And so in early two thousand and twenty, we brought forward a a price increase to our city managers. And they they felt at the time that that was just too big of a jump because we were trying to play catch up to where what we had lost, right? So that we could maintain our level of service. So what we ended up doing was we went back to the drawing board over a year's worth of work into that. And we came up with a plan that basically brought us back up to zero to cover the cost for what we are providing now. And it we divided it into two, the increase into two phases. Phase one, which is effective July first, twenty twenty-two, and then phase two, which becomes effective July first, twenty twenty-three. Starting in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, we go back into just a a regular cost increase as as negotiated, basically.
And that's that's the other part. It's actually, it doesn't seem like it is negotiated, because what it says in the years thereafter is essentially there's a formula and a big component of the formula is the budget that is the, I'm sorry, I'm I'm miss, I'm not saying this as eloquently as it's stated. But it's based on, let me see here, the county's budget cost to provide services. So it it almost sounds like we as a city with this agreement have we have no way to control that cost other than like if the county decides through their budget process to allocate more budget to spending here, we would be essentially on the hook based on our proportionate share and the formula that's laid out. Is that accurate?
So it so in the agreement, each fall, we will be meeting, well, we'll be meeting regularly with the city managers and police chiefs no matter what. But in the fall, we will be meeting with the PMA, and we'll be bringing forward anything that we see as a change in whatever service that we perceive, because maybe maybe there's a new law on the books that we have to uphold. So maybe there's a cost associated with that. We would bring that forward and make it known to the city managers at that time. Maybe the city managers may have all talked together and decided that they wanted to remove deceased animal pickups from their service agreement. We could have that conversation, and then things could be modified at that time. There's this, this is, this is a platform for us to have discussions, to be able to provide the service. The thing that we is very challenging, and we don't want to get into, is we don't want to provide this service for the city of Clayton and this service for the city of Concord and this service for the city of Brentwood. That's very, very difficult. So we have to have a consensual agreement across the board. And and so that's where, you know, it's very important for us to all have these conversations, as difficult as they might be. But the cities definitely have a voice, and the cities definitely have a choice. Okay, so is, you know, the the
I guess I'd have to disagree. I mean, I it does feel like what you said, there there would, there could definitely be a conversation. And the meetings that you're talking about, they sound informational, which is great. But at the end of the day, the contract, the agreement is what it says, and I think that'll be controlling. And it essentially says our fee will be based on whatever the county budget. And we don't really have a lot of well, we have zero ability to affect the budget other than, you know, a lot of talking. And so that it just seems it puts us in a position that we're we're beholden to whatever the county wants to charge us. So I I mean, I just raised that as an issue, not necessarily saying that we should change that, but just identifying that as a feature of the agreement as it's written.
I I and I understand what you're saying, but I do want to say that there is ability to have conversation. We've recently had conversations to the PMA that we put the importance of the deceased animal pickup on the table. And so what they asked is for me to come back and say, is there a cost-saving way to do it by perhaps hiring a third party to do it? Or is it more cost-effective to have the county do it? And so I prepared a report and provided that report to the city managers to be able to make a conscious decision in what they wanted to do. And they they talked as a group, came back and basically said, let's go ahead and have the county provide that service with that additional staff person at this cost. So we did. So the the cities do have some conversation. I yes, I mean, there is a I, yes, I mean, there is a, yeah, there are things that they don't have control over. They don't have control over the, the pay increases or the health benefits that county employees get. So I agree with you, there are some costs that aren't there. But the cities also do have the ability to make their own decisions to do their own services or provide parts of their own services. Um, you know, so, uh, in other, um, districts and other counties, some cities have said, we want to provide our own animal control field service. So they hire, um, uh, you know, community officers to go out and act as animal control officers. And then they contract with the shelter for holding the animals and, and providing the care. Because there's, there's a multitude of levels in providing animal services. It's not just the field. It's also the animals' care at the shelter that come in, that the city, and this is all state mandated for the cities to provide. But how the cities provide it is totally up to the cities. Our, the choice in our county is eighteen of the cities have chosen to contract with the county to provide that service because it's more cost-effective than the cities doing it themselves. One city in our county, Antioch, has chosen to do their whole own animal services. They have their own shelter, they have their own animal service officers. And as a result, their cost per capita is in the neighborhood of about twenty dollars per capita. Whereas you all are being, um, charged a less cost per capita, uh, up, up to in twenty-three, twenty-four, it goes to nine dollars and eleven cents. So there's a savings that's the city. The city always has a choice. The agreement has, you know, any party can make a, a decision to, uh, walk away from the agreement with a ninety-day notice. But, you know, I, I hope that that doesn't happen, but it's one of those things where, um, you know, I'm here to, like I said, my goal here as a Contra Costa County resident, as a Contra Costa County employee and a person that really feels that we're in partnership with our cities is to provide you with the most effective, efficient service we possibly can. And, but I do have to ensure that we are paid in a way to cover our costs. Because when that doesn't happen, then your service levels get affected. And I don't want to affect, and your, your residents in a negative way to the service levels.
So, can I, can I have one last question just to clarify? So, um, you know, we talked about, or you mentioned shelter services over in Martinez and I, I don't know if there's another shelter, uh, in the county. Um, it, like, if an Antioch resident who is not a party to this agreement have, you know, has a, a live animal and they bring it to the Martinez shelter, is that accepted at the shelter?
So I will tell you, it depends on the situation, but the animal is not kept at the shelter. So if we have a, a senior citizen who has made a tremendous effort to get that animal to us, we're not going to turn her away. We'll accept the animal, we'll explain to her where her shelter is located so that she can make sure she takes the animal there the next time. And then our officer will drive that animal to the Antioch shelter for proper care. Because that is not our jurisdiction, but I'm, we're not going to provide a poor level of service to a person who's tried to do a good thing for an animal.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. That, I think that's.
In conclusion, I, uh, Beth, this has been very, very helpful and enlightening. And I guess, uh, simply because we have not, uh, seen a formal agreement, uh, come to us in some time, as you have suggested, that seeing a proposed two hundred thousand dollar, and admittedly, it's over two years, that, uh, it was, and it caught my eye immediately, but, uh, uh, only because I've had some direct interaction with our community, uh, on these matters. But I certainly appreciate your clarification. And at least from my perspective, uh, I don't, I wouldn't see the city of Clayton wanting to establish its own animal services entity. It makes sense to me, uh, that the county uh, provide that service and then distribute, uh, those services and costs over eighteen cities. Thank you.
And just for clarification, like, what is the alternative? If we do not elect to engage in the services and then we do not elect to provide our own services, what, what would, what would be the consequence?
We're in violation of state law and so any remedy that would be available under state law, um, would be available to folks who wanted to challenge the fact that, um, we are required to provide those animal control services and will provide them, um, at a certain minimum level.
All right, thank you. That's, that's very helpful.
There any other questions from council? And with that, I will open this item up for discussion. Again, we're on the agenda, item number four H, talking about our contract with animal control services. Janet, are there, uh, any hands raised in, in the gallery?
One hand just went up. Richard, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you will have three minutes to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Richard, welcome. And again, we're talking about number, item number four H, which is about animal control contract. You're on, you've got three minutes.
Thank you. I just want to tell you that I work for a, a small city in California and we currently run our own animal control. And I will tell you, that is the worst thing you could ever do. I, uh, completely regret coming to a city that has its own animal control because it's been nothing but a nightmare. And I know that, uh, costs can seem exorbitant and you start to ask yourself, is this money really well spent? But I can assure you that it is, that the last thing you want to do is start dealing with it on your own because it's, uh, I've been a police officer for almost twenty years and there's nothing worse than dealing with the animal side of things. So, um, just thought I'd throw my two cents in there.
Thank you, Richard. Your comments are well taken. Are there any other questions from the public on this particular item, Janet?
Mayor Cloven, I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
And with that, we'll close a public comment on item four H and bring it back to the council for discussion. And, uh, I wanted to thank, uh, you, Ms. Ward, for your presentation. I don't foresee that we, um, like Richard just said, have a desire to get into the animal control business in the near future. And this seems like the most logical path forward. Although personally, I, I, I agree with Councilman One, I'd like to see the metrics of what, how many number of calls that we've made just on an annual basis. Uh, just to get a sense that, uh, i- if, if we're hitting, um, um, averages, um, where, where, where our value is. Uh, I, not that I don't trust, it's just nice to have a metric to, to confirm that against. Um, when we look at a contract of this size relative to our budget, so that's my thoughts. Any other, any other questions or comments from the, the council?
Oh, I would concur with that. Uh, a- again, this is something that we have, I, I mean, in my, in my experience, uh, we've never directly addressed this and now when you see it hit you there with a two hundred thousand dollar, uh, over two years, you question it. Thank you. But yes, we would want to have, you know, take a look at those metrics.
Will do.
Any other, uh, questions from council or common comments from council? With that, uh, I would, uh, entertain a motion to adopt item number four H from our consent agenda to, uh, adopt a resolution approving the arrangement to agree with the Contra Costa County Animal Service Department for animal service control for the next two-year term. Are there any, um, motions?
A little, a little approval.
A motion from Councilman One? I think I heard a council, uh, member Diaz is the second. With that, uh, Janet, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember One?
Hi.
Councilmember Wolf?
Yes.
I, Mayor Tillman?
Hi.
Mayor Cloven?
And that is an I. With that, it's a unanimous approval of item number four H. We're going to move on to item number five, which is recognitions and presentations. And item number fo- five A is for information only, where it's no real action, but in the past, uh, um, year, we have recognized the following for the month of June, which is Portuguese Heritage Month of June. The, uh, Pride Month, which is LGBTQI Pride Month in June. And, uh, we, we do recognize Juneteenth or June nineteenth. And I think this, this year, June twentieth, where the city offices will be closed for that day. Um, I, brings me great pleasure to bring I, item five A closed, but also bring up item five B. Um, as a parent, uh, of, of Otters, Danny Hill's Otter Swimming Otters for, for eight or nine years, we, uh, spent many, many a summer on the deck and swim meets in the county and, and, and city meets. And, uh, is with great, uh, joy that we are going to declare June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two as Otter Day and I'm going to read the following proclamation to that account. Whereas Danny Hill Swim Team was, has embodied the character of Clayton for the past forty-five years. And with every parent volunteering and working side by side in an effort to develop and maintain a high-quality swimming program with an emphasis on building self-esteem, camaraderie, good sportsmanship and team spirit. And whereas DHST is a recreational swim team that has enabled thousands of Clayton youth of all abilities through four decades to have fond memories of summers with friends on the pool deck and at meets. DHST is a nonprofit organization that is led by countless volunteers and tireless and talented coaches. Whereas the Danny Hill Swim Team was formed in nineteen ninety, nineteen seventy-seven as the Aqueducts, consisting of only fifty swimmers. During the nineteen eighty-six, the team renamed itself the Otters. And by nineteen eighty-nine, the team's roster had swelled to over a hundred swimmers. And whereas in nineteen ninety, under the leadership of Matt Mize and the partnership of the Danny Hills Homeowners Association, team opened up a new twenty-five yard, eight-lane pool in the gorgeous setting tucked beneath the majestic Mount Diablo. It immediately transformed Danny Hills into one of the finest private swimming facilities of all the county that has become home to over two hundred and fifty swimmers from Clayton and surrounding cities who participate every year. And every year since nineteen ninety-five, Danny Hills hosts the Devil Mountain Pentathlon, an event which draws over one thousand swimmers to Clayton. And whereas Danny Hills participates annually in the Concord City Swim Meet held in late July each year, DHST has won the A Division the first time in nineteen eighty-two, but has won Division A at the city swim meet for the last eighteen years, capturing the team's twenty-fifth city meet championship in twenty twenty-one. And whereas the Contra Costa County Swim Championship is the biggest meet of the year and features swimmers who achieve qualifying times. At the county meet, DHST competes against the best swimmers in the county and has been a perennial top-five team throughout the last decade. DHT has two Division Two championships from nineteen ninety-eight to nineteen ninety-nine, placing second in Division One in nineteen ninety-five. And whereas last year in twenty twenty-one, the Dana Hills Swim Team, under the leadership of head coach Nikki Palmer, won Division One in Contra Costa County Swim Sheep Championships for the first time. Now, therefore I, Peter Cloven, mayor on behalf of this Clayton City Council, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two as Otter Day in the city of Clayton and call upon our residents to do the same. And it is with pleasure, uh, that I, uh, I'm glad to do this again as a, as a parent. Um, swim team embodies who we are as a city. We're all families of all, every color, every, 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 every philosophy. And the ma- the rainbow come in and it, and they just have fun and work together for the benefit of our children. I believe there is somebody from the team that is here, uh, is, is, uh, to have to say a word? Somebody raised their hand?
Amanda is already in the room.
There she is. Hi, Amanda.
Hi, thank you so much. I.
Oh, you're.
We're very excited about, we're very excited about this. For behalf of the Otters, I'm the head of the social committee and we're, thank you very much for doing this for us. We're so excited to be, uh, to be part of this and we're going to be downtown, uh, supporting the local businesses on, on Tuesday, starting at two o'clock, we'll be down there. So, um, we'll be in our otter gear, but we really appreciate all this and we're very excited for this. Thank you so much for doing this for us.
Amanda, you're so welcome. Thank you for everything you do. All the parents that are involved with you, all your coaches, and of course, all your swimmers. It's, it's, it's amazing, uh, to be up on the pool deck last Saturday and you guys are awesome. So thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
We'll look forward to seeing you next Tuesday. Excellent. And with that, we'll close item number five B and move on to item number six A, which is city reports. And we'll start off with you, um, city manager Raina, with the city manager report, please.
Great, thank you very much. Um, just a few things this evening. Uh, first, we are still accepting planning commission applications through June fifteenth. There are three openings on our planning commission. Encourage, uh, anyone who's interested, please to, um, go to our website and download an application and, uh, apply. Well, we will have interviews for the planning commission on Tuesday, June twenty-first at six P M. Uh, secondly, as the mayor mentioned, city hall will be closed on Monday, June twentieth in observance of Juneteenth this year, uh, as a federal holiday. So we're going to close our offices, um, consistent with other, uh, public offices. Uh, and then just third, as everybody can see by the fact that we're completely on Zoom, uh, the COVID rates are very high, uh, throughout the Bay Area, very high in Clayton and in Contra Costa County. And, um, we've been able to keep our city hall open so far through some, uh, a few COVID cases. But, uh, we know that, um, it is out there, it is circulating and, um, we're trying to be extra cautious since we are a, uh, a small organization and, um, need everyone to try to stay healthy. Um, that includes our council. Uh, so I just, you know, um, want to encourage everyone to, you know, continue to be, um, vigilant and, uh, we will hopefully make it through this surge as well. So, and that, with that, that is all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Raina. Appreciate it. Let's bring it back and close item six A and bring back the slide of six B and have city council reports. And if you don't mind, Councilmember Diaz, I'll let you start us off.
On May, uh, twenty-first, we had, uh, the second concert in the Grove, Night Moves was there. Uh, on the twenty-second, on Sunday, I attended, uh, Chuck Hammond's Celebration of Life. Chuck was one of the three partners of the new owners of this Clayton Club. And he unexpectedly passed away and they had a wonderful, uh, uh, afternoon for him on the twenty-second, at which I attended. On the twenty-third, uh, the Contra Costa County Fire District had its, uh, academy number fifty-seven, in which they graduated twenty-seven more, uh, firefighters. They are really moving ahead and staffing up. Uh, and I'll come to that later because they are getting ready to annex and by July first, we'll take over uh, East County Fire. But just to make sure they have the right staff levels to service all uh, of Contra Costa County that they have responsibility for, including our wonderful Station Eleven. Uh, they are really building up the bench to make sure they have, uh, people, uh, ready to step in when people retire or whatever. Um, on the twenty-sixth, attended the CBCA meeting over at Endeavour Hall. Then on, um, on the thirtieth, which was, uh, celebration and, uh, ceremonies for Memorial Day in the morning, attended our, uh, event in, uh, near our flagpole down on Main Street in Oak. Then later that day over at, uh, uh, Toto Santos Park for, uh, the full-blown, uh, observa- or excuse me, celebration and commemoration of those, uh, individuals that, uh, uh, gave the ultimate gift of life, uh, uh, to keep us safe and, uh, free. Uh, had a meeting on the thirty-first with the, uh, city manager and the planning director, uh, head of our special, uh, city council meeting where we were, uh, discussing, uh, a number of things and that was in perpetua- preparation of that. So I was very well prepared for the special council meeting. On the first of June, had a couple of things that took place that day. Uh, the Contra Costa Fire District, uh, broke ground and, well, actually, they didn't break ground. They had a, they had a fire station, uh, there that was, uh, numbered, designated number fifty-five. But due to loss of funding, they reopened it at a station ninety-five, melding it in in anticipation of, uh, Contra Costa Fire taking over the East County, uh, Fire District. So that was a real fine celebration. Later that day, I attended as a representative for the council at the Contra Costa Water District meeting. That was a very fascinating meeting. Let me just say this. Uh, that was the night where the fire, excuse me, the water district gave a complete breakdown of each of their departments and all of their budgets and, uh, uh, things that they are planning for in the future. More importantly, I want to herald, uh, the fact that they have a brand-new president and that president is. and that president is Ernesto Avella. Ernesto has been on the board for some years, but more importantly, he's a Clayton resident and our representative, and he's now the president of the board. And the original president had to resign for personal reasons. And so they have a vacancy in which they had an interview session of about four or five candidates that evening to fill that vacancy. They have not made it the appointment yet, but it's going to be at their next meeting. On the third, E-Brix, another meeting of the regional broadcast and communication service for all first responders. Then on the fourth, the concert with Brick House, another great evening out there, even though it got a little windy and chilly in the evening. Then on the sixth, had a couple of meetings with constituents and then in person, by the way. And then met for the barbecue, which is coming up on July nine and ten. And then again today before our meeting, met with the Chiva Police and the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman De Hemmer Diaz. We'll go to council member one for your council report.
Thank you. We had a budget, an audit committee subcommittee meeting last week discussing the budget that we will be discussing later tonight. A lot of good information and questions from that. So I I appreciate the staff taking the time to to put that together. A number of of calls with residents and discussion about the budget, as well as, I think, some areas of, there's, there's been quite a lot of discussion about some ongoing landscape challenges that are maybe present in various areas of the city. So a lot of a lot of talk with with residents about those issues and I'm sure that will come up as we move forward later on the agenda items.
Thank you, Councilmember One. And with that, we'll move it to Councilmember Wolf. You are next.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. All right. Well, it's been pretty busy. The the attended, of course, our special meeting, our city council meeting, but I've had several meetings with pride committees on the pride parade and celebration coming up this month on the twenty-fifth. And also with the CBCA barbecue committee, the CBCA regular general meeting and the CBCA advisory committee with the board meeting. So I've been very busy with those meetings. Attended the Memorial Day wreath laying and flag raising in downtown Clayton on Memorial Memorial Day. Of course, I met with the mayor, met with our city manager. And let's see, what else? Answered some emails with regard to some light, some traffic light timing issues that are going on and I met with with Raina on that as well. And the the last thing I want to say is that oh, and also met with with the pride committee and with our 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 community development director at the same time. We had a meeting there. We had a meeting of a committee in the Grove. And while I was at the Grove, it was not the cleanest place in the world while we were there. In fact, we even commented on why there were so many, so much trash and bottles and things laying around. And all of a sudden, a a a couple of dads and their kids, I would say aging, ranging in age from five to ten, came over and actually started cleaning up the the Grove. And they left it completely spotless. And I I was lucky enough to talk to one of the fathers. I was hoping they were going to be here for public recognition tonight. I don't know if they're in the audience or not. But nevertheless, it was an amazing show of citizenship and pride in our community that they would take it upon themselves to teach their children and have their children participate in cleaning up like that. And it was it was pretty amazing to watch. So I want to thank them for doing that. And that is my report, Mayor. Back to you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Wolf. And with that, we'll bring it to you, Vice Mayor Tillman.
Thanks, Mayor Cloven. On, let's see, on the twentieth of May, I met with Eddie Brasan, who is a Concord City Council person. We meet periodically just to have updates. So it was nice to catch up with him on the twenty-second. I attended with the mayor as well as the vice mayor of Pittsburgh, Shannon Scales, Preston Scales, sorry, at the new art gallery that opened up in downtown Clayton, J E Fine Arts Gallery. We were there for the ribbon-cutting ceremony and luckily Chanel contacted me. I think it was the afternoon before to let me know that she was coming in. They had asked her if she would come in to come do the actual ribbon cutting. She is very known in the arts community out in Pittsburgh and those residents had asked her if they, if she wouldn't mind coming over here. And she thought, well, I shouldn't come to your city without letting you know. Are you going to be there? And I said, oh, I hope the mayor knows. And he did not. So we both were able to attend. I called it kind of what not party jacking. What do you call it part when you crash a party, party crashing? They actually welcomed us with open arms. It's a beautiful gallery if you have not been in yet, but it's J E Fine Arts Gallery and it's right behind the Bachi Courts. And anybody who's lived here for a while, it's where Lima used to have her levity studio. That's where they are. And I would encourage you to go. I do know that they will be holding some art classes for not only senior citizens, but also for young students. So probably, probably middle age, middle school, sorry, I've got COVID. You guys are going to have to forgive me and so bear with me tonight. Middle school age children. She isn't sure. She wasn't sure if she would have it for the elementary school students yet. It's something TBD, but she did want me to pass that along that they would be having art classes. And they did begin those. I saw a sign from her last week, a message from her on Facebook that those have started. So if you want to look into that, I encourage you to do so. On the twenty-third, I attended the budget audit committee meeting with council number one, excuse me. And then on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, I had the privilege of actually judging some fabulous senior projects for Northgate High School. It's part of the requirement for those students to graduate that they have to actually come up with a an issue that they want to not only just discuss, but research. And then they have to do presentations. And so it was a presentation that I actually had to judge for two days. And there were probably a total of ten students that I had to judge. We have some very bright students who are going out into the world, whether or not they're going to pursue a four, two- or four-year degree or going to trades, et cetera, or into the armed services. These these students are very well-equipped and I was pleased to participate in that. I also, let's see, attended on the twenty-sixth, the CBCA meeting as well as Councilmember Diaz mentioned. And then later that evening, I listened in just briefly for the Cal Cities. There was a Cal Cities meeting. I mean, Representative De Sany spoke for that. I just mentioned, listened to that briefly and then had to scoot out for another engagement. Let's see, on the twenty-seventh, I attended the elected women's luncheon. I've mentioned that several times before. That's a networking opportunity just to meet with other, not only just local females that are in our county, but they don't have to be running for an office. There are people who are dealing with the arts within our within our county and trying to to get the word out so that people can help spread the word. And it's also a nice way. That's actually how I met Shannon Shaw, who was Sergeant Shaw's wife. And she's going to be running for the city of Oakley. And so I was able to interact with her and meet her through that. She actually invited me to my first one. On the thirtieth, I attended the wreath laying ceremony for Memorial Day downtown, as well as a Toto Santos hundredth anniversary for VFW in the park. And then on the thirty-first, I attended the special council meeting. As well as on six one, I attended the pride flag raising down at our city hall, which was amazing to take part in. I was have the honor and privilege of raising the flag down there. Excuse me. And then I also wanted to make note that on six twenty-five, we are having our first ever pride parade downtown. I'm on on the pride committee along with Councilmember Wolf and Councilmember, I mean, Mayor Cloven, sorry. And so that will be six twenty-five at ten A M downtown. And that's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, Eric, can I add? I also attended the flag raising for pride. I forgot to add that to my report.
No worries. Thank you very much. Appreciate your report, Vice Mayor Tillman. I wanted to state for the record that it was my decision to put this meeting virtual on tonight. I both my wife and my daughter came down with COVID last week. And I know that it's it's running rampant again in the Tillman household. And based on the most recent Memorial Day and based on the graduation ceremonies and kids coming home, it's everywhere right now. And to answer, to echo our city manager's sentiment, we need very much right now to protect our city staff. We are down already at least one and others. If we lose a staff right now in the midst of the work that they are doing, helping us get through the storm of demand, it becomes real troublesome. So let's keep them healthy. Let's get through this next couple of months and let's get back in person as soon as possible. I'm hoping that'll be in July. It's been an incredibly busy few weeks. I can rip through it. A lot of you guys have already mentioned it from the concerts in the park and Night Moves to the CBCA at a Hoyer Hall to a really fun thing. On May twenty-seventh, I got a chance to participate in Mount Diablo Middle School's Career Day. And I got to sit in Mr. Cornfield's class. He's a science teacher of eighth grade. He is a phenomenal teacher. You can tell students adore him, whether the goofballs are super, super smart. They they actually appreciate him. And I got to speak not only as brief, he introduced me as the mayor, but I get to speak about environmental engineering and it was just a lot of fun. We got some very bright cookies in our middle school as well. So our 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 future is in good hands. I really enjoyed the memorial ceremony downtown and some noise has been made about it on Nextdoor and other social media. The VFW chose to do a brief reef laying at eight o'clock in the morning and to change out the flag. But it was their one-hundredth year celebration and they chose to do this year only a very poignant, beautiful ceremony at Toto Santos, which I was fortunate to very play a very small part in. Very well done. We are blessed to have a group of veterans doing what the work that they do for each other and for us in Memorial. The pride flag raising was awesome. Two years ago, I must say that there was trepidation about its raising and some of the reaction. This year, when we raised the flag, there was nothing but joy. And that's a change in in itself. And I'm you see that with the with the with the word inclusion at the front of our our town. It is exactly who we are and it's it's very encouraging. I was able to go to the mayor's conference on June second. One of the topics that was presented was on tobacco, e-cigarettes and flavored tobacco, particularly to youth. I'm, I guess I'm pretty oblivious. So I asked my my daughter, this is actually an issue in Clayton. And that e-cigarettes and vaping and things like that is is an issue. And I encourage all of us with children to talk to our children. And if it's something that we think we should come up with a a strategy around enforcement locally, let's talk about that. There is lots of help at the county level from the county health department to help us with that. We were identified as one of the cities in Clayton that have no real enforcement or plan for how to deal with that. So please talk to your children and let's have a conversation in the future about whether that's something we want to bring to the table and how we want to address that to to help our our children in the future. Conferences of the park are getting awesome. One of the things I really enjoyed was last night, we, I had a chance to award gifts or prizes to very, very talented local artists. The in in anticipation of the pride parade on June fifth, there was a poster contest that was put out to the local schools. And we gave out cash prizes to first through third for kindergartens through fifth grade and then sixth grade through twelfth. I because Holly was not feeling well last night, I had to step in for her. She would have done a bang-up job because she was, she worked on it really quite a bit. But I was excited and seeing the talent that was there and listening them talk about how they got to those, the ideas that created the art. Again, some amazing youth out there in our community. I've been inundated. And then I think that's an appropriate term with phone calls and emails this past few weeks. Clearly, there is a group of individuals who have some issues with some of the things that are going on in the city. And I I I've been hearing for it, hearing about it. And I've answered every phone call and I've answered every email, email. Let me give my my email. It's peterc@claytonca.gov. And my telephone number is nine two five six seven three seven three two zero. If you have a question or you have want to send me an email, I will answer it. And I will give you the facts about where we are. We have an incredibly dedicated, hard-working, and I'll say it again, small staff that is doing their best. I have seen their efforts. I have talked to our public works director twice in person. I have talked to our city manager. I am impressed. They are, they they care and they're doing everything they can to make our city look good. They are doing everything they can to answer every one of our needs. The needless attacks on the city staff is is really, I'm not, I'm not sure where that's where that's coming from. And I just want to say that I personally appreciate their efforts and especially in light of all the challenges we've had recently. They deserve kudos and appreciation. And I just want to throw that out there. I think that's it. I'm going to end my report there. But I want to again, thank you, staff. I appreciate you. And with that, we're going to close item number six B and bring it on to item number seven, which is public comment on non-agenda items. And as I will say every meeting, this is a time for you to speak for any item that is not on the agenda. So don't, the budget's off the table and the consent agenda items are off the table. But would like anything you would like to say, you're welcome to do so. Please address the whole council. Do not talk to one of us individually. We are all doing the best we can. And again, keep it kind and respectful. And with that, are there any hands for public comments, Janet?
Yes, I do have one hand raised, two hands now. Terry, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you will have three minutes to speak.
I think Janet. Now, can you guys hear me okay now?
Welcome, Terry. You are on.
Excellent. All right. So council member or Vice Mayor Tillman already mentioned a little bit about this, but just wanted to welcome the public that's listening to join in Clayton's first-ever pride parade on June twenty-fifth at ten A M. It should be a really amazing event. We have, at this point, we have over four hundred people participating in that event. We have community groups, nonprofits, churches, kids from from the high, local high school, drum line, even the the scouts. And so we were going to have a really good mix. The folks will have events in the the Grove for the kids with face paintings and balloons and a handful of info tables about a lot of those groups that are participating in the in the parade. So wanted to extend the invitation to the community to please come out June twenty-fifth at ten A M. Also wanted to re-extend the invitation. I know all of the council members have been invited to participate in the parade. And as the council members mentioned earlier, three folks are. The invitation is still open for the other two to join us. We would love to have you. So so you know where to contact us, but I hope if if you don't join the parade, hopefully we'll at least see you on the day of supporting on the sidelines. So that's a, that's it. Hope to see everybody come out and support our LGBT community and please dress just festive.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. And with that, are there any other hands that are available out there in the public? Janet?
Yes, I do have one other hand raised. Rosie, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you will have three minutes to speak.
Okay.
Love your picture, Rosie.
Oh, yeah. Pretty cute. No. So basically what Terry said. She took everything I was going to say. No, seriously, though, I am, I am really amazed at the amount of support that we're getting from the downtown businesses. I'm just um the downtown businesses. I'm just, my heart is full from all the support that we're getting. Um I have been promoting the parade in my Zumba classes and yes, and yesterday's class over at In Shape Concord, I had a couple more sign up to be in the Zumba group. Um it's just, you know, it just warms my heart that how many people are are being so receptive to this and um, you know, and it's all for me. It's all about everybody needs to be accepted and everybody um deserves to be loved, so that's why I'm um volunteering and supporting um this event. Um I just wanted to point you to the ClaytonPride.com website, which I'm um the webmaster of. Um you can look and you can see all the people that are that are in the parade. We have the entrance all listed as Terry said, you know, we have so many people, you know, from across the board. We have you know, dance, uh several different dance um academies. We have the Girl Scouts, we have churches, we have a a bunch of dignitaries from the different uh surrounding cities. Um and it's just, you know, it's it's just amazing. The other thing that's on the website are the poster contest winners. I've added those and I will include some of the pictures from the ceremony from last night. Um and I I think that's it. I just want to say thank you to the community for supporting this. My heart is full. Good night. Thank you.
Rosie, thank you very much. I love your enthusiasm. Any other hands um for for public comment? Janet?
Yes, I do have a couple more hands that went up. Scott, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you will have three minutes to speak.
Hey, guys. Uh thanks for your time tonight. Really do appreciate it. Um well, Rosie, if Terry said everything you were gonna say, you said everything I was gonna say, so uh I really just wanted to direct people to ClaytonPride.com, very important. Um and again, my my heart is just uh overwhelmed right now to see the support. Um we went out to every business in town uh last weekend and I mean, almost no objections. Everybody, I I mean, everybody but a few businesses put flyers in their windows. People were asking, how can we hang flags? Um Peter, it was wonderful to see you at the uh at the kids uh um award ceremony last night. You handled that so well. Um stepping in for Holly and and Holly, I really do hope you feel better. You've been uh you've been, it was wonderful to see you watch the uh to to raise the flag. I mean, it's and honestly, you guys never get any credit. City staff, Raina, Dana, I don't know if she's here. Um you guys have been working tirelessly to get this done and and really appreciate your all's efforts and uh one last shout out, CW, you've been a uh a wonderful addition to our to our team here. It's uh you have, you have been working tirelessly and just really, really appreciate your efforts. So uh like Terry and Rosie said, June twenty fifth, hey, be there, be there or be square, like they used to say, right? Um it's gonna be huge. People are, I I I work in Brentwood, I work in Martinez all the time. I'll go to uh to work and I'll I'll want to give somebody a flyer and they'll say, oh, I already heard about that. So yeah, we're we're getting out there and uh and yeah, like Terry said, would love to have all the city council members on board, but if not, just love to have your support, guys. So uh yeah, great job as a team, everybody. Well done. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Scott. Janet, are there any other hands uh for this public comment item number seven?
Mayor Cleveland, I do not have any hand, other hands raised on this item.
Excellent. And with that, we will close item number seven of public comment and move on to item number eight for public hearings of which we have none. And now we get into the meat of our schedule tonight. Uh action items, item nine. Um we'll start off with item number nine A, where we get to discuss and approve conceptual frameworks for the allocation of pandemic recovery reserve funds. And with that, we'll turn it over to our city manager, Raina. You have it.
Great. Thank you very much, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm going to share a presentation and uh I'm gonna ask when I get it started for you to tell me whether you see a single slide or uh two slides. What are you seeing?
Bingo.
Oh, okay. That's because I haven't started the PowerPoint presentation. Now, what are you seeing?
I see two, a big one and a little one.
Okay, this is never uh, there you go. Now, now you'll see the right thing. So
bingo.
I I just never understand why with two, anyway, it's not important. Uh good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Um my purpose this evening is to um discuss the uh potential framework for um allocating uh future use of pandemic recovery reserve funds uh for city council priorities. Um Catherine Korsak, our finance director is also on. Hopefully Janet can move her on to being a panelist. I meant to do that before I started my PowerPoint presentation. Um but uh when the Budget and Audit Committee uh met on May twenty third, there was a conversation about some potential uses of pandemic recovery reserve, which you'll remember is where we have our um our ARPA funds, our our federal American Rescue Plan Act funds. Um they are now sitting in our pandemic recovery reserve and there is a request to have a broader discussion about the categories that the council might want to spend these funds in before we have the more specific conversation in the context of the budget as to which specific things we might want to make recommendations for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. So um you know, you you may remember we're getting two point nine million dollars um in uh ARPA funds and uh that has uh we got the first tranche in July of twenty twenty one. We'll get the second tranche uh next month in July of twenty twenty two. When we first received these funds, there were very specific categories in which the funds could be spent. When the Treasury Department issued its final rule on these funds in January of this year, uh we were allowed then to use the funds for any governmental purpose and we have reported uh to the Treasury based on council direction that we are using those funds for uh public safety services. With that, we free up the general fund dollars then to um go into our pandemic recovery reserve. What we've already spent or appropriated from these funds uh include the Clayton Cares Program, um some of the administrative program costs that were associated with that, the one-time premium pay for essential workers and the purchase of the Clericov budget software. Those were all uh decisions that were made in the past year. So as we head into the FY twenty three budget discussion, what are the categories in which we might be making recommendations for either FY twenty three or future years use of these funds? And they are uh listed in the staff report in your packet, uh but I'll go over those categories briefly for you now. Um so the first category is budget stabilization. This was certainly a um a category that the federal government anticipated for use of ARPA funds and we will discuss in the context of the budget, uh two recommendations, uh up to one hundred and thirty thousand dollars uh in budget stabilization for fiscal year twenty three. And then potentially could be, as we know, we have a structural budget challenge for the next several years as we head toward a more permanent fix for additional revenues, um an additional bridge of a hundred, hundred and fifty, potentially two hundred thousand dollars a year. Those would be future year decisions, but this is what that category might cover. Organizational efficiencies and needs, a second category, we'll make again some specific recommendations for FY twenty three. These have to do with some one-time uh a one-time staff position to clean up and finish off some work related to our financial record keeping, our financial records, our policies around uh financial matters, et cetera. The uh software and services to digitize and implement electronic document management, something that with a very small staff, it's it's would be very beneficial for us to have the ability to really go through and digitize many of our past records so that they are much more easily found and managed. Uh increased support for better leveraging of technology and cybersecurity. We know that we need to make some improvements. We do have an IT assessment going through the process right now, and so we'll have recommendations on that probably within about eight weeks. So we will have some some areas where we think we will be able to make some really strategic investments. Also, uh something that isn't necessarily a specific recommendation for FY twenty three. We don't have a good comprehensive asset management or preventive maintenance management system. This is something again that would help us with limited staffing, make sure that we are strategically using our resources. And in each of these categories, there there are other things that would fall under these headings, but these are some examples of items that might fall into these broad categories. Uh energy efficiency, water efficiency, um accelerating replacement of other vehicles, replacement of trivers, lots of different areas around infrastructure and equipment that would allow us to be more cost effective in the long run and uh maybe get ahead in a few areas where we haven't been able to in the past. Direct community support. This is an area where much of our current funding that has been spent already uh has been in this area, so we have had the Clayton Cares Program, which is scheduled to expire by the end of June, the end of this month. Um potentially funding for fee subsidies for resident use of facilities. We will be talking about our fee schedule later. Uh we do provide um some very uh cost-effective fees, but they don't fully recover our costs, so that's something we may want to look at. And there's the opportunity to potentially consider very specifically targeting the use of some of those funds. Communication, community engagement, um website, uh phone system. We have a not a very sophisticated phone system. Online payment mechanisms, uh other community uh engagement efforts that might involve additional communication out into the community. Recruitment and retention is kind of the last area, the last bucket, if you will, that uh is suggested as part of this framework. Conducting a comprehensive compensation review, job classification study, organizational audit, assessment or scan. Some of these could also follow fall under the organizational efficiencies item, but are also listed here for recruitment and retention. So I will briefly cover this in terms of what you'll see in the budget when we get to the budget item. So a little bit of duplication between the two items because there's some give and take between them, but I just want to kind of tee it up for the budget item that this is what you'll see there. That there is a recommendation for up to the hundred and thirty thousand in budget stabilization. The one-time uh unmet needs category about two hundred fifty, two seventy, rounding to four hundred. Our balance at the end of this year is anticipated to be just under four hundred thousand. We'll get another one point four million in July, as I mentioned. And so uh we'll have about one point eight. If the council chooses to allocate up to four hundred thousand, that would still leave us with a little over one point four million. So a recommendation to consider reserving uh a portion of the uh remaining ARPA funds, that remaining one point four million to even more clearly set it aside for potential unexpected um situations. This is all in addition to the five plus million general fund fund balance reserve that we have in place already. And then that would leave about eight hundred and sixty five thousand. That is not at all yet allocated and not set aside for um other unexpected items. So the purpose now is to come back. Um I think the easiest place to see all of the categories in one place is in your staff reports on the third page of the staff report, this nine, item nine A and um what we're asking from the council this evening is input on the the buckets or the categories that have been identified, whether those seem to make sense, are there, are there things missing from that? And whether there's direction generally on uh prioritization perhaps among those. And then the more specific pieces will likely um come up for discussion in the budget item, but obviously can be discussed here as well. As I said, there's a little bit of give and take that might uh pull us in both directions with uh this particular item. And with that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. That is it for the presentation and we are available for questions and direction. That's it.
Excellent. And we'll bring back to uh the council for comp uh questions. Is there anybody would like to go first?
I was gonna ask staff a quick question. If um hold on one sec. Excuse me, sorry. If you can elaborate a little bit more on the um unmet needs that city staff recommends um to use in fiscal year twenty three, specifically the senior accountant. Can you talk a little bit more about that role and how you envision that being used? I know that you mentioned excuse me, in the summary, a little bit about it, but if you can give a little bit more detail.
I can, I'll let Catherine answer that.
Um so um I I would say I've I've somewhat developed a job description for the position because I, you know, thought this through of what this person would be doing and how best to use um that resource. Um just to remind you, it's, you know, I just have the one, one part-time accounting tech under me right now that's actually doing accounting work, so the finance director role really is also somewhat of an accounting manager role and and doing accounting work. Um so um the um the the one-year limited term senior accountant position would be to um help with all of our financial digitization of records. Um it's hard to um parse that out to like a a sub because you have to be within our accounting system and understand, you know, how all the accounting works in order to correctly um you know, post an invoice to the accounting system and make sure that it's, you know, it matches, the coding matches and all of that. So you kind of need an accountant to do that work. Um um so so they would help with digitization of records. They would help with all of our um our balance sheet accounts and um making sure that we're reconciling those on a regular basis. Um they would help us um with our processes and procedures, all of our financial process and procedures that um we are reviewing and kind of revamping and redeveloping. Um that's also something, you know, in theory, you could sub that out, but it's difficult because um in order to really know the systems within, you know, an organization, it, you you really have to be doing it to understand it and to um correctly document it. Um so they would be, they would be helping with that. Um and um as far as just regular accounting work, they would also be doing some regular, normal, just day-to-day accounting work. Um I I think that that if if you have any additional questions, I have, I have a few job descriptions that I've developed that I could um provide to you to to show you um.
No, that's that's good. Thank you very much, Catherine. Um I mainly asked the question because it is a large chunk of the of the ask. Um and so I wanted for everybody that was on the line to understand exactly what they would be doing, excuse me.
Yeah, and that's the total, you know, package. The base salary would be probably closer to like, I'd say eighty to ninety eight thousand is a is a pretty low range, to be honest, for a city. I've already started to look and Walnut Creek has a posting right now for a senior accountant and their range is a hundred and eight to a hundred and thirty one thousand base, and then they have benefits on top of that. So the hundred and fifty includes benefits and it's a um you know, base of um of probably just under a hundred thousand.
Thank you.
Help me understand that. Does that mean that you're gonna pay benefits to a part-time employee? Short-term?
It would be a full-time employee, um and they would not, they would be a a limited term, one-year contract. So it would be a full-time employee that's a purse. So it would be a full-time employee that's a purse, that would be in purse.
Okay, and what do you have to do after a year? Uh, are we gonna have to re-up?
Um, hopefully after a year, we'll have our policies and procedures developed and things in place. Um, that, you know, at that point, we'd have to reassess and see what's going on, but uh.
This, I hate to say this, but it almost sounds like we're adding a second finance director.
I think we're probably one of the only cities that doesn't have a full-time accounting staff under the finance director. So really, I'm just, I'm just do, I'm doing accounting work and not overseeing it.
And I understand that we don't have a huge depth of talent in the, in the finance department. Uh, I mean, we have a director and what, an accounting technician, and that's basically it.
We do have limited staff, yes.
How many other cities have Catherine? Like, what, what a full?
Well, the city, the city of Maraga has three, so they have, um, and they're, they're pretty small like us, so they have three full-time staff. Um, and those are all accounting, you know, doing accounting work. Um, and um, most cities have between four and five that are our size. Um, some cities have up to twelve to fifteen. So one full-time finance director and one part-time accounting tech is pretty limited.
Best, for perspective purposes, the city of Maraga has seventeen thousand six hundred people. And we're about eleven thousand four hundred, so we're, we're, we're about two-thirds of them, but we only have one and a half staff and they have three full-time staff. So we're, we're understaffed relative to them on a per capita basis or per, per basis.
Well, may I ask, and how, how we gotten along eh, up until now, uh, without in, expanding the uh, staff of the finance department? Eh, does that mean that the former incumbent in the city manager staff helped do that job? Uh, what? I, I, I'm just trying to get the, uh, understand the uh, distribution of work.
And so i- if I can step in a little bit on that, I think two things really speak to the need particularly for a one, one-year position. One is that there continues to be ever-increasing regulatory requirements, reporting requirements, new um, regulations out of GASB, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. So there's, there is more work to do today than there was two years ago or five years ago or ten years ago. That's the first piece of it. The second piece is that as a result of the turnover that occurred in this city between twenty nineteen and really late twenty twenty-one, we got behind and we had a lack of documentation that has hampered our efforts to both be efficient and to keep up. And so one of the, the big drivers for this, and you asked this question, well, are we just gonna have to re-up and re-up and re-up? One of the goals is, once we get all of the appropriate systems in place, can we go back to where we were with one finance director and sixty percent accounting tech? Maybe, maybe not, but maybe it's somewhere in between that and another full-time FTE. But right now, where we are because of that turnover and because of the lack of systems that we have had um, communicated and documented and put in place, we're really behind the game in terms of that staffing right now. And that's, that's a, that's a big piece of why this need is here now. Because we need to get resettled to a good place.
Well, this maybe follows up on a discussion you and I had today. And that is, uh, I'm beginning to see that we possibly could use, and I know we've spent consulting fees more than we had anticipated. But maybe what we need is a full uh, analysis of job functions of the, of the city administration. And uh, I, I know from my experience in the private sector, uh, we would bring in a firm every two to three years and just re-evaluate all the positions to make sure we have, one, the right number, two, the right uh, depth in that. Because this is sounding to me, and, and I, and maybe I don't see the full picture here. It sounded like to me we're duplicating the finance director's position.
We're not duplicating a finance director's position. What we have is Catherine doing an accountant's position, not doing all of the things that we would want a finance director to do because she doesn't have the time to do them, like the policy setting and the strategic um, uh, management uh, on some of the financing. And, and I'll be perfectly frank, I mean, the, the fact that I have a strong budget background is, is hugely significant in us being able to get a budget out this year because Catherine has so much on her plate that she and I have shared the budget duties because that's the only way we can get the budget done. And so we're not adding another finance director. We're allowing Catherine to move into that finance director role by adding an actual accountant position.
Yeah, I mean, it just, yeah, it, it, it's, but it's sounding to me as described that uh, she, you're maybe suggesting bringing in a person that technically compensation-wise is senior to the finance director we currently, no?
No, 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 it would definitely be.
Hundred fifty thousand a year, sounds like, you know, it's a.
Remember, that's, that's, that's full cost across the city. Um, the uh, salary position is, that we're suggesting is maybe twenty to twenty-five percent below Catherine, twenty-five to thirty percent. I haven't done the math in that order, but that's about the rough order of magnitude that we would be talking about.
Okay, all right, well, uh, I, I just think as you and I discussed today, uh, we need potentially, I think, uh, a, a complete uh, analysis of all functions uh, in City Hall and see if we have the right capabilities with job descriptions that uh, ma- match the need and uh, can accomplish the, the, the workload that, that's, that's ahead of us. So I, uh, I want to talk about that further at a later time. Thank you.
All right, um, Councilmember one, please.
Uh, just a couple of questions. It, from what you described, um, Catherine, regarding the function of the position, it sounds like there's a pretty good mix between what I would call one-time work and ongoing operational work. Is, is that a fair statement? I mean, things like digitization and, you know, making our documentation of process more robust. I feel like those are probably things where we have some, what I would consider technical debt. Just things that we have not kept up with over time, and so we need to, uh, those are not necessarily one-time, one and done, but they are, there's a, a body of work that's built up that, you know, we're making up for. But then there's other things that you mentioned, like, you know, account recs, posting invoices. And then, you know, I forgot that you mentioned one other thing, but that, that does seem like more operational, regular accounting work. Is that, is, is it, so is this, are you, is your vision that this position would um, alleviate both one-time things as well as ongoing operational things?
Yes, I, I would agree with that statement. Um, there also um, are a few more GASB uh,
Sure.
requirements that we have to implement. We have to do GASB eighty-seven, which is the lease accounting. Um, and um, we have
That's terrible.
To start that for this fiscal year. So we're just starting it in June after the budget is done. Um, to um, you know, go through our contracts and get that done. Um, so, um, so yes, there is a mix of one-time work, um, work that has had, you know, that has accumulated. Um, and um, and I would also say that um, being able to um, be hybrid at all times. Um, right now, you know, the, the way that I work, I can easily work from home or from the office, um, because I have what I need set up in that way. But um, you know, it would be good to, oh, have all of our financial systems, including, you know, the way that um, our payments are received online, our business licenses are done, um, our um, permits, how they're paid, you know, everything um, has to get assessed and looked at so that everything can be done fully remotely. And people don't have to be, have to come into the office. They can have the option. But if, if we don't have that option at the time, we should still be able to um, you know, have full business operations and be remote. And right now, that's not, that's not really an option. Like I, I said, I can do my work remotely, but I would still need to go into the office at least a few times a week to get physical papers, you know, and bring them home, which I've done many times now. So, you know, there's still, there's still a lot of paper. Um.
Yeah, and, and I, I get that. I think if that's the question of essentially strategy or, or priority, right? Like, there's a lot of capabilities, like you said, fully remote, or able to support hybrid work, that we're probably not cutting edge as a city. Um, that's just a question of if that's where we want to place our bets. Um, so I mean, it does, it does really sound like you're making the argument for an additional FTE versus, you know, a one, a, a one-year engagement. I know that it is presented as a one-year engagement, but I don't see how, uh, given the fact pattern that you've laid out, that, you know, you, that Raina, you've laid out, it does not seem to indicate a one-year engagement. It does, I, it does very much feel like there's a body of work that we, we need coverage for, that we don't currently have. And, and I, I don't know if that's, if that's your, maybe that's a, a longer-term play or what, or this is a, this is a um, a kind of investigate and see approach. But I, I mean, I, I, I kind of have a sense of that level, the magnitude of work. And it, it does not sound like it will go away at the, at the conclusion of one year. And I guess I, I bring that into the context of, you know, in the prior, um, the prior year, when we were talking about uh, bringing on the city engineer as a full-time position as well, and adding an FTE, you know, switching from a contract position to in a, a full-time position as an employee. Uh, where would you prioritize those two things if that is still something that you are interested in? If you could only pick one additional FTE, would you place, would you place it in this arena or would you place it in the engineering space?
So that's a great question. Um, I will say first that I do think that we don't know exactly where, if we had our all systems firing, that, what our exact FTR, FTE needs would be long-term in accounting. It's probably more than one point six with Catherine and a point six accounting tech. It might not be two point six. Um, so, and I, I would say if we had all of our systems in place, it really might not be two point six, it might be two point O. And then we need to look, and that almost speaks um, to Councilmember Diaz's question about an organizational assessment. Putting that aside, given where we are, and so our new city engineer is on the line. So he'll, he can either chuckle or, you know, put his head in his hands or, you know, I'm not sure what he's gonna do because I can't see him and he's probably grateful for that. Um, I would say that today, based on the performance and the structure of our agreement with Anchor CM and Larry's work as our city engineer, I did not believe that I would say this six months ago. But I'm very happy with where we are. I think it's a good, flexible, strategic solution for us to continue with our Anchor CM agreement. And I would put far more emphasis on an FTE for accounting today than I would the other. I think we have a good solution in place. Will that still be true three years from now? I don't know the answer to that, but I feel really good about this, the, the place that we are and the level of service we are getting that is much more, um, it, it is still relatively cost-contained, but it is uh, much more uh, diverse than we could get with a single person. And I don't feel the same need for control in order to uh, ensure responsiveness, um, which is really what was driving the, a lot of the engineer um, discussion before. So if I had to pick today, I would pick an account.
Okay, no, that, I mean, that's helpful. I mean, just to contextualize it, right? Because I, I, we have, you know, economics, right, unlimited needs and scarce resources. So uh, it's really just a question of prioritization. You know, if we were to have moved forward with the engineering position in the prior year, we, we would, you know, you wouldn't be where you are today with our, with our um, satisfaction with the current agreement as well as, you know, we would have less mobility to move. So it's just something that I think about when we, in terms of like where you place your bet. I, I do, I do see like in the packet, you know, you do have a table, uh, it is page one eighty-eight of the document, not necessarily of the internal page references, but of the PDF itself. And there's like a list, and so, you know, you had identified these things. Ri- under the last item, uh, which is categorized as recruitment retention, there is an item identified as fund the comprehensive compensation review and job classification study. I think that, that is probably um, related or, you know, kind of in line with what Councilmember Diaz had mentioned. Is that, would that fit, uh, is that item kind of what he was describing?
Actually, what he's describing was more um, related initially to the item that's right below that, which is an organizational assessment or scan, which would really look at, you know, what's the, what's the body of work to be done? You know, what's the, you know, is, do we have the right um, staffing for that? And then it, it, you know, we wouldn't necessarily have to, you wouldn't start with a compensation survey. I would start with an organizational scan.
No, yeah, that's, that's probably a more holistic way to approach it rather than, I wouldn't focus purely on compensation, I think. It's really, I mean, this looks to me, you know, assessing what our need is versus our capacity and then everything associated therein.
Yes, and it, it would be a consultant. I'm just being, you know, clear.
I mean, they, that seems like a, that seems like a skill set that we don't have internally, so that, that, that. I, I think that is a, I mean, it, it seems less um, has less pow to it, I would say, but it, it, it probably does touch on a lot of other issues that are happening throughout the city that could, you know, really give information or insight into that. That could like, support the arguments that we're trying to make. Um, so I, I do think that there's a lot of value there, even though um, it, it, it's, it's less pow than some of the other items. Just comment.
I, I would welcome an allocation of funding to do an organizational, organizational assessment, staffing analysis. You know, there's lots of ways to describe that and, you know, we could put together that scope of work. I think it would be incredibly valuable. Um, but, you know, it isn't going to write a financial policy manual for us. And that was, you know, so it's, it's again, in looking at relative priority. Um, but uh, if there's a, a willingness um, on the council's part to allocate some funding to that, I will be the first person to put my hand up and say, yes, please.
I mean, I think it's almost, like, if you were to look at this, if you were to greenfield this, you would almost want to know the information that would be derived from that prior to making other larger decisions because it could influence or, you know, give you insight into the, the decisions that you want to make. Now, that's with perfect information and time and, you know, assuming that you would have that. But I, I, I don't know if that's a fair assumption at this point. Um, but if I, you know, if you were to look at this and say, what should I do, in what order? I mean, assessing your need is kind of, comes pretty high up in the, in the list of order rather than like pulling the trigger on other things that may come as a result of that assessment.
I, I do think that the, the uh, a, a, a one-year position or some um, something similar on the accounting side is an absolute need that we know we have. I think matching it with a, an analysis, an organizational analysis to help determine what is that picture after that year is a, a very good order in which to do those. a, a very good order in which to do those, but I would not want to put off for, you know, three or four, whatever months to do the organizational analysis, bringing on someone to really help us get up to speed so that by the time we hit, you know, because we're, we're, I mean, we're, you know, frantically working on the budget, but any second now, we're going to be closing FY22. And so, you know, that work just fires right back up as you're, you're well aware. It's never ending.
Yeah, no, it seems that, and I, and I, and I appreciate that. I know we had a very positive discussion about that organizational you know, you know, looking back over time, you know, it's something that never got addressed, at least in the last 10 years that I'm, I'm aware of, and it's, and we're probably due for that. I, you know, things change, and I mean, that's the, you know, that's one of the facts of life is that every, there's things that change. And like you say, there are more requirements coming down the pike at us that, you know, do we have the, are we ready to address those? And so I guess I'm leading up at some point in time, we need to, and I, and I'm not trying to delay the decision on this piece, but looking down the road, something that's more global that addresses other facets of, of running a, a, a city.
Did you put on, you know, referring back to the page, the table, did you put this in a priority order or is it a haphazard order?
I, I get random.
Well.
Except budget stabilization, I would say is, is, is I would say the first two are kind of in priority order. The other four are, you could, it depends on kind of what you're thinking, but yes, actually, I mean, I would say that the first two, those were the first two things that came to mind when I was working on, on putting together the framework. I think you could argue the others could be more variable in terms of priority by individual project.
Two items after the senior accountant are the digitization and the second, the third, the third one is IT support for cybersecurity. I think the IBT support for cybersecurity, wasn't that a, a item that came from our audit that we need? Wired, so that's kind of a, a, an automatic need to fulfill, it sounds like. And I can tell you from my personal observations of the way our filing system exists at City Hall and the fact that we're kind of down basically our, our, our knowledge base of one of our employees who knows where everything is stored. The need for digitization of our files is a huge need, especially since we've had so much staff turnover. So that to me is, is, is a huge priority as well. So I, I mean, it sounds like those first three items under organizational efficiency are, are huge needs as well. I know the, 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 this is that, digitization part of that is, is, is something that I've been harping on for quite a while. We need to get our systems in order so they're searchable and findable so that we can save our staff valuable time. I mean, it's, it's, it's a time is money thing because if you're, they're spending eight hours looking for something, you can just digitize it, it's right there. That's important.
Third, I mean, I think digitization is incredibly important. Thirty five thousand seems light. I mean, go ahead.
I could respond to that. I, I think there's a lot of interdependency within our office. It's very small, and so we're all, you know, doing different jobs. And so part of having that full time senior accountant role, they would be helping Jen, it would, it would possibly free up some, a little bit of her time to be able to help. She has a scanner in her office now and she's ready because in July we are going to be digitizing all of our invoices and connecting them into the accounting system so that when you go into the accounting system, you can easily just click on your invoice and see it within the system. So that's one like step that we're, we're planning to take in July. But I, I just think there's a lot of interdependencies within our office that, you know, having thirty five thousand for the consulting services and the possible solution. And then, you know, having, using staff time to actually digitize because we're going to have to be involved in that process.
Yeah, I mean, it's like a one by one thing, right? Like, or, I mean, does this include the cost of the license for the OCR software as well? Or like, you know, if you have a, you had a consultant to help and then you, you have to get the license for that and then you need to maintain that ongoing for all the incoming new records, like thirty five thousand just, it just seems a little light. Like, I've seen projects like this and and that would, that would be a great number to hit. I don't, I don't know. I, I don't know if we, how much diligence we've done around that.
I think we have a rough estimate, but I mean, again, you know, this is, this is, the question here is, you know, is that a, a good target for us? And is that something that the council is willing to prioritize as a target?
I know that for me, just based on what I've seen, digitization is, is a huge need for our small staff. And it's one of those things that one time funding like this is, is appropriate for, for causing efficiencies that would benefit us long term.
No, I agree. I don't, but isn't that one, would you consider that one time? It seems like ongoing, right? Because it's license cost and it.
Initially, to get, to get, get us everything into the system, that's, that's.
Yes, that is, that is a one time body of work for sure.
There will be a maintenance fee, a cost associated with it, but the initial consulting and, and labor associated getting it into the system is a one time fee that's going to be fairly significant. And actually, though, you're right. I think thirty five thousand is kind of on, on the light side as well for all the documents I know that we need to have digitized. So, but I know it's, it's, it's important to, because we lose institutional knowledge from any one employee not being available. We're going to be a, spending way too much time, too much time responding to PRAs or FOIA requests.
No, yeah, I, I agree. I mean, it's certainly very important. I just, you know, when, if, you know, if we move forward with something like this, I just want to be clear, like, we're not saying you spend thirty five thousand dollars and you're done. I think you are essentially saying that we're going to invest in a system that will have ongoing costs essentially in perpetuity for the license and the maintenance of the, of whatever process that we implement. It, it may take, it'll be less over time for sure. But you will have incremental costs as you're essentially signing up for an increased run rate over time for whatever that, that happens to be.
Go ahead, Councilman Wolf.
Yeah, I'm going to go back to the, to the senior accountant position. You mentioned other cities looking for talent with more money. So what is the likelihood that we're going to be able to in a timely fashion get somebody on board that has the talent that you're looking for? And then the other question is, this is a CalPERS thing, so what, what is the long term liability for us then with a, a person like this as opposed to a contract player here?
Um, so first of all, we might not find a person. I, I have spoke with Mason Associates and they do governmental accounting work and they are having a huge increase in governmental clients asking them and needing them, needing services because they're so short staffed. And governmental accounting is very specific. And, you know, I'm not, this is a senior accountant government role that has to have that experience. So there is a likelihood that we won't find someone. I don't know how likely. As far as the, the liability or long term liability for PERS, if, if they're a Peppra, you know, it's, it's not going to be a, a significant difference in what we're currently paying for our long term liability. But if they were a classic person, it might, you know, contribute a little bit, but I, for, for a one to, one year term, I, I don't, it's not going to make a big difference now. But, you know, I mean, there is the possibility of, of trying to hire a retired annuitant for a limited term. But that's also, you know, that comes with its challenges also because you have to stay within that term.
That's a, that's a six month position. The other thing about hiring a contractor is, and I think I said this at the Budget and Audit Committee meeting, CalPERS takes an extraordinarily dim view of long term consulting engagements because that is essentially work that would be done by a governmental employee and they basically force you to push that person into PERS anyway. So, and they get really, really mad and can impose sanctions on the city if we do it wrong.
But they consider one year a long term arrangement?
Anything over just under six months is long term.
I see, I see. Okay.
Was it that nine hundred and sixty hours?
Yes, that is.
Nine hundred and sixty hours. So, but, but if we don't find the, if we don't find the talent that you're looking for, what's, what's plan B?
Mason Associates? Or somebody like Mason Associates, an, an accounting firm? Or potentially a retired annuitant. Those both have downsides in terms of a retired annuitant. We just talked about the timeframe. Having a, a consultant come in and do it or a contractor, one, we have the same problem if it's more than six months and two, they're also not, their hourly rate is much higher, there aren't benefits, but they are, as Catherine was explaining, one of the huge benefits is if they are in our system every day really, you know, live in the dream so that they are, you know, able to work with us to craft all those policies.
I mean, it really does sound like an employee.
Yeah, it does.
That's why it's proposed as an employee. Other feedback on categories or prioritization, I mean, we spent a lot of time on some of the specifics, which is great because it'll flow very nicely into the budget conversation. But there is also, you know, the desire that both Vice Mayor Tillman and Councilmember One shared to have this sort of broader framework of buckets or categories that would allow us to prioritize spending.
Yeah, and I think that's very helpful, the way you categorize it. So thank you for doing that. I know that that's something that we had asked for. I mean, you know, I, I don't know how, how, how you feel, but one of the things that I always focus on when we talk about one time money with, which this is essentially reserved. I mean, one, I'm not sure that I like the idea of creating a prioritization of, you know, reserves separate from essentially our general reserves because it's all essentially fungible anyways. But, you know, I would, I would prioritize things that are one time in nature over things that are operational in nature for sure. So tho- those things are a lot easier and easier lift to say like, we need, we're going to use our reserves to do this one thing and it's not going to create a long tail where we're going to essentially subscribe to something over time. So, you know, when I look at this, things like the recruitment and the study, or sorry, the, the organizational audit, as you described, like, that definitely seems one time in nature. So that sounds great. You know, you, we've talked at length about the need for some of the financial related stuff. You know, I'm, I question whether or not that's one time, but it doesn't seem like, we, we could phrase it or we could position it that way for now and then see what comes out of that, I would say. The rest of the things under organizational efficiency do seem one time in nature here. So I think that, that lends itself very well. You know, when we first engaged in this discussion for ARPA, you know, I, I think we, we put a heavy support around direct or heavy emphasis around direct community support. And so I would continue to do so as well to the extent, I mean, I know that our take rate was a little lower than we had anticipated, but I still think that that has a, a very large impact on the community. So tho- those types of things, I think those three items for me, you know, really stand out as one time in nature that could have the largest impact. So that, those are just my thoughts.
And I concur, Jeff. We did focus on direct community support and I've had conversations with both businesses and nonprofits who have bent my ear on the possibility of future benefits from that. So I'll just leave that in the pocket with no number set yet for direct community support as a possibility in the future. I still think that's what the ARPA funds were, were meant for. I do want to go to the second last item on our communications and community engagement. It's pretty clear to me that this is still a stopgap towards limping around, limping forward for the next two years. And under that, I've suggested the possibility of some type of a community budget advisory committee or BASSERS. And this is a great place where a, a group of professionals who desire to be involved with our budget and communicating that to, to our citizens outside of us as electeds can help us tremendously get the word out over the next two years via their own meetings, quarterly meetings or whatever communication they need to get out through newsletters or whatever to our, our citizens over the next two years to help inform them of some of the challenges that we face. And that's a pocket where we could support them through this, that, those numbers. I'm not sure what that looks like or what the values, it may be insignificant, but that's just an area where community engagement could be used in, in my eyes.
That sounds great. I mean, I don't, I don't know if that is funding. I mean, that seems more like a volunteer type committee.
Communication end of it, Jeff. I mean, as far as how, how do you, I mean, it's nice for them to meet, but how, how, how do we, they communicate? And if it's something that they need funding for, let's say a quarterly newsletter gets out, then maybe that's maybe appropriate.
Sure. Yeah, I, I think that, I, I agree. I think that's great. I, I do think that's a different of a different character than the things that Raina had assembled here in the staff report under this item, though. Although I do, I think that's a good idea. I, I, I think that is different than what was identified here under the category.
I was trying to fit in one of those boxes that seemed to fit right there.
Which I think was a point. I mean, I, as Raina mentioned at the outset, these were just general categories. I'm going to slot it in there, but it doesn't mean that it's all encompassing. There are other things that can go into each of those buckets. But I do have a question. I'm trying to find it in my old notes here. I thought that when we were engaging the community with these initial ARPA conversations that we were talking, several residents had commented that they wanted to see more infrastructure in place. Can you remind me what the categories were? So it was, we decided we wanted to have the Clinton Cares Grant Program and how that was going to be bucketed. But I thought that we had tried to set aside, or we thought about in the second tranche, doing something else around maintaining like our, our pipes or fixing.
Stormwater. Stormwater is the one where we know that there are increased regulatory requirements coming with the new regional permit that was just approved. We don't exactly know what those are going to look like, but we know that we're going to have increased infrastructure. So that fits in that infrastructure and equipment bucket. And I think I mentioned, no, apparently I decided I would leave stormwater out of that, but that's where that belongs in that box.
And then what about public works? Updates or funding for that?
Also, infrastructure and equipment. That's usually, that's pretty much all under that, that same general category. So, you know, big, you know, items.
Do we have an idea of how much that might be? And I know.
Goodness, we could spend anything from a hundred thousand to five million. So, you know, I mean, we, we have street projects we could do. We have stormwater projects we could do. Yeah, that is a, that is an unending category. I think there are some energy efficiency things we should look at doing. You, you know, the, certainly the, the mayor has brought up solar before. We've talked with a couple of performance contracting firms about potential opportunities to increase energy efficiency and potentially look also at water conservation improvements, right? So we're in a drought, we're likely to be in a drought for, forever. And so, you know, I think those are, are things that we would look at. Those in some ways don't have the immediacy, like, I know I don't, I'm not going to start them July 1st, but I need to get, you know, a financial person or et cetera for, for this, you know, right away in this coming fiscal year. But I think those are things that we need to take a look at because there are significant needs in that area. things that we need to take a look at, because there are significant needs in that area, and the ability to have, uh, the use of one-time funds, uh, to do some of that work is, is really, um, something that we should leverage.
And then as part of that, not the stormwater, but, um, recycling water, for lack of a better word. I had mentioned to, to Raina, that I have received several emails and comments from residents regarding the splash pad at the Grove Park, um, and residents were angry that that's not going to be used right now, but given that we're in a drought, um, and we need to conserve water, that's part of the reason why we're not doing it, and I think the question was asked, well, could the residents pay for it? And it's my understanding that we're charged per water use, so there isn't really an amount that we can, we can let them know that that is, um, it's based on how much it's used, is that accurate?
Yes, and, um, two other things, one is, it's not even as much the cost of the water as just, we have been asked to reduce, both by Contra-Cresta Water District and at the state level, to reduce water use, so this is not a time to increase water use. If that splash pad were using recycled water, recirculated water.
That's the word I was looking for, thank you.
Yes, I was like, recycle, it's not the right word, recirculated water. If that splash pad used recirculated water, I think we'd have a very different conversation about it, because then it, you know, we could set up something where, you know, I, I don't know, Saturdays it got, gets used, or holiday weekends it gets used, or whatever. Because it does not use recirculated water, so water that gets used just, you know, goes away. It is not, it is not a good strategy for this level of drought that we have. One of the things you may remember that we got a grant from State Parks for the, for improvements at the Grove. And there are a number of things that, uh, that we plan to do with that Prop 68 grant, and, and we talked about some, some bigger sort of furniture replacement and, and a replacement of the soft surface, I don't remember the name of the, the, the play surface. But I, I will, uh, also have us investigate whether we could retro, potentially retrofit that splash pad for recirculation use, I do know that that is a challenge in a small space because of the way that you have to build a vault for, um, and people have to, it, it becomes a confined space, so that's a minimum two-person thing. It may not, it may turn out to be wildly more expensive than we could afford to have that splash pad retrofit for recirculation, but it's something we'll at least take a look at, um, since we do have grant funds to use in that park. But right now, with the water conservation requirements, um, that have been placed on us, um, it's not uh, appropriate for us to have a non-recirculating water feature in use, and, and I know that that's frustrating to people, and, and you know, all, pretty much everybody on staff has talked to somebody in the community who's very frustrated and angry and, and not happy about that, and I appreciate that a great deal. I just don't think that, um, we can set that example right now, uh, given the, the drought conditions.
Whenever I talk to somebody about the splash pad, it's always, why is this not on? Because it's recirculated, and, and we have to explain to people it's not. We have to do a better job, I think, of letting people know, uh, that, that is not the way that was built, unfortunately, like other cities have it, we, we just don't.
I, I was thinking about that today, I took a walk at lunch, and I was walking around the Grove Park, and I thought, we gotta figure out a way to put up some signage that says, we're sorry that the splash pad doesn't work, but it's way too much water waste.
This is not, this is not.
The fountain is recirculating, by the way, in case people wonder, will ever run the fountain.
That's another.
Is recirculating.
That's right.
But the splash pad is not.
Maybe you're right, maybe we do put up some signs, this is recirculated water, this is not recirculated water.
Are there any other questions from Council on the items that presented in nine A? Yes, Vice Mayor Tillman.
Don't go yet, I just wanna.
Public comment at some point.
Direct, um, community support, just discussing the Clayton Cares program, um, grant program. How many recent applicants have we received?
We have received, I believe, two or three just recently, and this last, this, this, this obligations run, I believe there were five in this, four or five in this obligation run. They have started to decrease significantly, but.
Okay. Um, and do you happen to have at your fingertips the breakdown of the businesses versus the households?
I want to say, based on the prior numbers we had, that there were, um, maybe just under thirty households and just under thirty-five to forty businesses, something like that, approximately. We had set it up as a, as a one, uh, one quarter, three quarters for, in favor of the businesses, and we did end up, um, on that basis, uh, as I mentioned in a report a couple of months ago. I think we're just over what we would have allocated on the, the one quarter, so they ended up being still more businesses than households, but, um, not as much of a discrepancy as we thought we would see in the, in the applications.
And just, just a thought, going back to the splash pad, I think, given the smaller volume of water and the use of it primarily by children, there may be some health ish, health code issues relative to recirculated water. So, before you start researching, uh, construction costs, confirm the health code as, aspects of that. That, that's more, I think, more of the issue than it is the actual, um, construction aspect of it.
Will do.
Thank you.
And Holly, just so that you know, um, we've given out eight hundred thousand, or around eight hundred thousand now in Clayton Cares.
Thank you.
Grants.
Any other questions of staff from our council? With that, we're gonna get, open up nine, item number nine A to public comment. And if there's public out there that'd like to talk about the ARPA funding and these buckets have been created by our staff, on potentially uses. Now is the time to raise your hand, and you will have three minutes to talk. Janet, how are we doing? Is there any hands out there in the audience that could discuss this?
Mayor Cloven, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Thanks, Janet, and with that, uh, we will close public comment on number, item number nine A, and bring it back to Council for discussion. Is there any discussion that somebody would like to open up with?
I'll just reiterate that, you know, our, we've gotten a lot of feedback on the specifics, and then we'll roll that into the budget conversation. And otherwise, um, just if there's anything else for, for feedback to, to take into account. Obviously, we'll be back to talk about ARPA funding, pandemic recovery reserve funding, uh, many more times.
I do like the buckets that we have here and the breakdowns. And then to Councilmember One's suggestion, just putting which ones are one-time uses, maybe by each of them, or which ones would be continuing on, that'd be great to have. But I do like the buckets in the, in the bucket breakouts that you've identified so far. Um, that was specifically one of the asks that I had, which was putting, um, just for the rest of the council members before the Budget and Audit Committee. Um, when we met, it was just listing the needs that staff had identified, and if we were going to be using ARPA funds, Jeff and I had requested that we at least understand what use it would be used for, hence the buckets that we have now. Um, and then this is an additional layer to add to that, so, at least it wouldn't just be a broad, throw everything into using the ARPA funds or the, what do we call this, the pandemic recovery reserve funds, um, and just pulling it from there, it would, it would at least have categories, so that's why it's this way. And I appreciate that, thank you, Steph.
So, the recommendation from the staff report is to discuss and approve the conceptual framework for allocation of pandemic recovery reserve funds. I think we definitely discussed it, is there a, a motion to approve the, the framework as it's been written, is that, is that, that was appropriate?
What is the framework that is being approved, though?
I think we're looking at primarily the, the table itself and the way it's, it's been structured visually, can you answer that question, Raina?
Yeah, that was the notion, is, you know, are, are these a, a good start set of categories as a framework for how the, the funds might be spent? And, and really, I, I guess more specifically, is, is this, ha- has there been enough discussion for the council to feel comfortable to move into the budget process to talk about specific uses that are recommended for FY twenty-three? Because that was the, the, the point that the committee made most specifically.
Because they are tied together pretty significantly, right, so, you know. Yeah, I, 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 I had thought that what you were looking for here was an actual prioritization of the table, uh, that is on page one eighty-eight, but I'm not, I'm not sure, it sounds like that's not what you're asking for.
I had thought that that might be one of the outcomes, I mean, it really was going to depend in part on how this conversation went. You know, currently, what I might recommend, given the, the time and, and the still need to talk about the budget, is that I think I've gotten enough conversation to figure out where we might need to go next. One piece is the budget, and then the other is how to structure bringing back anything, and, and there've been some, some good comments about thing, ways to have some sort of guiding principles, as well as, um, some refinements to what's in that table, so. I'm, I don't feel the need to request that there's an action at this point, um, unless the council wants specifically to, you know, take an action that provides, you know, more clarity somehow specifically.
I think, uh, whatever action is gonna be part of the next conversation relative to this, so if you don't need anything more from us on this particular item. If you're all okay with this, I would like to close item nine A, if there's, is there any additional conversation on number, uh, uh, number nine A? Yes, Holly, Vice Mayor Tillman.
Jeff, are we sure if it's listed under action items that we don't have to take in action?
I am absolutely certain that in this particular, well, in any case, the council can always just, you know, ignore the city manager's recommendation and kind of do whatever they want, but also in this particular thing, this wasn't a, this isn't like you're adopting a resolution to appropriate money, or, you know, something that would take a more formal action, this is fine, we're fine.
Okay.
Then with that, um, I'm gonna go ahead and close on the, item number nine A. It is now nine twenty-three, uh, I would like to adjourn this meeting, uh, until nine thirty.
No, recess.
A little, a little recess. Recession, yes, um, I think we all need to get up, stretch our legs, use the restroom if we need to, and come on back, I will see you all at nine thirty. But that meeting is adjourned until nine thirty.
Get anything in my teeth?
Nope.
Okay, good.
I got a little bite in there myself.
Just got a handful of nuts. How you hanging in there, Holly?
I'm ready to go back to bed, but I'll power through.
Wait for Councilman Juan and Diaz to come back on?
I'm here.
I was missing your face there, Councilmember Diaz.
Sometimes I like to hide myself. Believe it or not, believe it or not.
All righto, it is now nine thirty two and we're back in session. I'd like to pull our our council members. The next item nine B is a discussion of our workshop on the fiscal draft budget and giving direction to staff. I think we did a little bit of work on that in our last item nine A. I think there is going to be a long discussion that's going to follow relative to this item. That will take us late as well. And I have a proposal like to put out there that we, since we're meeting on June sixteenth for a special meeting on Thursday night, what would be the will of the council if we push this item nine B off to the sixteenth, which is next Thursday evening? So that we can have additional discussion then and have a chance to digest what we just did, or we can just power through it tonight. Basically, I'm suggesting that we could move nine B to the to the meeting of June sixteenth and go straight on to nine C and and close the meeting early the next. I know that.
Are we, are we actually meeting on the sixteenth? There's.
Refresh my memory. Is that, what, what time is that?
I have, I have a special meeting in my calendar for nine sixteen.
You're on hold, but it's a hold, isn't it?
You're right. The city manager gave us four.
So what, what time is that on your calendar?
So that, that meeting has been identified as a potential date for budget discussion. That is a seven P M. meeting on the sixteenth. It would be fully remote at this point. And so the, you know, the the question is, when, when are we ready to do our best work on the budget? I know that late night and budget aren't always super.
It's scintillating. It's scintillating.
Maybe in your world. I support moving it to the sixteenth.
My only concern is if there are things that come out of that, does the staff have sufficient time to make whatever changes to meet the June thirty deadline?
We will be meeting again on the twenty first. Is that not the case as well?
That's, that's also true.
Yes, we'll be meeting the twenty first. That gives us about four and a half seconds. Okay, all day Friday to make any changes. So it's, you know, it has its downsides as well.
But we'll have the hold on the twenty third as well.
That at this.
Confirmed.
Wait, what?
Long, I thought it was confirmed on the twenty third.
There's so many meetings.
Yes, yes. June is is full of meetings. June twenty third has been confirmed. At this point, it is targeted for the housing element to come back for final blessing before we send it to Housing and Community Development before our first review by them. So that would, so follow up to the discussion that we had on May thirty first.
Okay.
It's a six o'clock meeting, right?
That is a six o'clock meeting. June.
Yeah, I have June twenty third as a hold on the calendar.
I, I believe that I confirmed in an email to the council members of.
You probably, you probably did.
You know, we could have finished the budget discussion by now, but.
I must go it out there. I I'm looking at the the hour. I'm taking into account that some of us are tired and that there's only fourteen attendees in the audience. And I know that for a budget discussion, you may want to have additional attendees for public comment. Also out there, take an informal poll. If you're interested in pushing this to the sixteenth, please just raise your hand.
I'm, I'm formal. I move that we move it.
Okay, we got, we've got a, we've, we've got a.
It's not informal. It's definite.
He's a formal type of guy. We, we got, we have a motion on the table of remove this to the sixteenth. Is there a second?
Mala, do you have a?
I just, I was just going to suggest that if there are participants who are here for this item to attend the sixteenth, that we would allow them to make a public comment.
Okay. I'm still, I only have one assured saying, yes, they'd like to move to sixteenth. Is there anybody else has a strong opinion? Or do you want to power through?
I'm fine with moving. I'm fine with powering.
And I agree with that either way.
Now, how, how you hanging there, Vice Mayor?
I'm fine. I think if we can start the initial conversation, it might get it, get us some leeway for the staff to at least begin working on stuff before a day, a day and a half before they need to actually do it, not even a day and a half, less than a day. So I'm fine. If I go off camera, I'll go off camera at some point, but I'm here.
Okay, with that, I think we have directions to try to to move forward and forge ahead. So we will move on to action item number nine B, which is a workshop for the fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty three draft budget and direction to staff. And with that, we will bring it to you.
And if I may just start with two things, just by the way, item nine C, we can certainly move to the sixteenth or the twenty first. That is a much shorter item. I will say we do need to hold the GAD portion of, we need to hold a GAD meeting this evening. We do not need to have the full budget presentation. But we do need to have the GAD Board of Directors consider and adopt the setting of the public hearing for July nineteenth. So we have typically had the presentation of the budget at the first meeting, not just at the the public hearing meeting, but we can do it at the public hearing, but we do need to have the board set the actual date for the public hearing. So don't forget that we have to have at least a brief GAD meeting when we get to that point.
Although directly after adjournment of this meeting?
Yes, yes. And with that, I will just give a very brief introduction. Our finance director, Catherine Korsak, will do the presentation, but as we've been talking, it's been, it's a difficult budget year. It's a difficult budget year for many, many jurisdictions. COVID nineteen has not helped any of us in terms of our budgeting and our services. And, you know, not only the general fund, but across all of our funds. We, we do have some financial challenges. And while we hope that the economy continues to recover, we also hope that inflation slows down because those are both having an impact on us. And with that, I am going to turn it over to our finance director to kind of at least give a high level overview of the general fund and the other funds.
Good evening, Mayor Cloven, Vice Mayor Hillman, and council members. Can you see the the screen proposed budget review? Yes, okay, good. And so throughout the annual budget process, the city of Clayton ensures the efficient and effective use of economic resources as well as establish establishes our highest priorities to be accomplished. The annual budget sets the direction of the city and weighs both positive and negative events happening within, within our locality, but also much broader issues that have trickle down effects to the city and its residents. This budget represents the city council's commitment to strong financial management practices and a strategic plan for a sustainable future. It has been a collaboration between the city manager, department managers, city staff, and members of the city council to be used as a tool to identify funding priorities, reflect the needs and desires of the community, and to guide management throughout the year by clearly setting forth goals and objectives of the city council for the coming year. In your, your goal setting session that you had recently, the three goals were set to pursue a structurally sustainable budget, identify what it takes to support staff in terms of technology and tools to bring the city into the twenty first century, and as Rena pointed out, to present a compliant housing element to H C B. Overall, there's very little added to this current budget. We have a already negotiated four percent increase for the Police Officers Association. And we have also included a three percent proposed COLA for the unrepresented city miscellaneous employees. As a whole, the city is in a good position to be able to plan for the future now. And the authorization of ARPA, as we have just spent a long time talking about, has provided some funding to help stabilize us in the short term. With this money, we're able to provide short term relief to residents and local businesses who are negatively impacted by COVID nineteen. And as we plan for future cost increases, we have the option to use this pandemic recovery reserve in order to allocate more, more funds to be used. Without it, we probably would have been in, and it would have been much more difficult. So it's, it's very good that we have this money from the federal government. At the time of the proposed budget, the most significant economic impact is that of inflation over the first part of the calendar year of twenty twenty two, inflation has increased more quickly than any time in the last forty years. So that is not very fun. We do have our work cut out for us, but with a thoughtful partnership with the city council and local community members, we will be able to plan for the future and best allocate our resources. So we are starting with. So the goals of our workshop are to identify city council priorities, consider the pandemic reserve fund for budget balancing strategies, and of course, looking to the future. So the proposed budget review will, we just gave an introduction and we will review the following budgets. We're going to start with the general fund. We'll go on to landscape maintenance district. We will review the neighborhood streets, streetlights fund, the stormwater fund, the Clayton Financing Authority, the Pension Stabilization Fund, the Pandemic Recovery Reserve Fund, which we've already talked in at great length about, and then go over the C I P Overview Fund. And then at the end of this, we hope to receive some direction from the city council to move forward. So to start with the general fund, and this is composed of nine departments. The Legislative, Admin, Finance, and Legal are one department, are are one department. Public Works, Community Development, Police, Library, Engineering, and the Clayton Community Park. You can also refer to on the fund summary page in the budget, which starts on page thirty six. The city of Clayton is projecting a six point eight five million, six point eight five million dollars in revenue in fiscal year twenty three, which represents a thirty two percent increase over the prior year. Budgeted expenditures are projected to increase by right around thirty four percent or one point seven nine five million to a total of six point nine five million in fiscal year twenty twenty three. This included the ARPA funds, but without the ARPA funds, our revenue is projected at five point three eight million, almost two hundred thousand dollar or three point eight percent increase over the previous year. Our expenditures are projected at five point four nine million, a three hundred and thirteen thousand dollar increase. So if you see the difference between the three hundred and thirteen and two hundred thousand is about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollar difference. From this pie chart, you'll see the revenues by source. So our largest revenue is tax revenue, and that includes property tax in lieu of property tax, lieu of vehicle licensing fee, which which is around twenty two percent. Local secured ad verum property taxes at about twenty point six percent. Sales and use tax at ten point five percent and franchise fees at ten point seven percent. Other significant sources of revenue come from the redevelopment property tax trust fund at eight point seven percent and and administrative support charges at five point one percent. This slide further explains the breakdown of how much a city, the city receives from a residence tax payment. And I just wanted to point this out. So this is your ad verum property tax, and it's an example that the city of Clayton receives six point eight six percent of the tax base, the tax base that goes to Conocoast County Tax Assessors. So for a property tax, a property with a million dollar tax base, so a million dollar home that is sold, six hundred and eighty six dollars goes to the city of Clayton and nine thousand three hundred thirteen dollars goes to all of these other listed districts. So Mount Diablo School District, and this, this is in page thirty eight of the budget, if you'd like to study it in greater detail. On page thirty seven, you can, of the budget, you can refer to the following chart, which illustrates the ten year trend of these four major revenue sources for the city. And so we do see them increasing. On page forty one, we have a graph that represents our twenty year history of general fund budgeted revenues. It is clear here that the the revenues are not keeping up. And this year, we see almost a million dollar gap between what the C P I is and what our actual revenues are. The major cost increases for the twenty twenty three fiscal year, which you can refer to on page thirty one of the budget document, are really across all the departments and line item expenditures. However, our main increases can be attributed to the following. The Police Officers Association negotiated raise, which I already mentioned, is a four percent, costs forty three thousand dollars. Our miscellaneous three percent raise is a general fund increase of fifty six thousand. Dispatch services have increased by fifteen thousand. Healthcare costs by twelve thousand. All our general liability cybercrime vehicle increased by fifty four thousand over previous years. Animal care service, which is we already heard from, increased by right around fourteen thousand. General and gas, electric and gas estimated at increasing around eleven thousand. And I say estimated because we just, you don't know what the gas prices will be. Election costs for fall election is twenty thousand dollars. We have required actuarial reports for Gatsby sixteen seventy five, and that's eleven, eleven point five thousand dollars. Legal services have increased by about six thousand. Engineering services by twenty nine thousand. And I T. Support for hybrid remote city council or hybrid city council meetings about seventy four hundred dollars more. And last, everyone had, many have referred to this, the CalPERS unfunded liability is approaching its peak. This year, it's forty six thousand more than last year. And if we follow at this current amortization payment schedule, we will see the peak occurring, occurring in twenty thirty one. And then we will see a decline until the current U A L is paid off in twenty forty four. So in 2045, we may or may not have a balance on our two largest CalPERS plans, depending on the investment gains or losses at PERS. The good news is that most of our new employees are Peppera employees, and the UALs for Peppera plans are almost non-existent. They're 0.6% of what the two large grandfathered classic plans are. So in the budget document, we have a section that looks at improvements for opportunities on page 28. And we can see that the pension and OPEP policy are a goal for our current year. So once we're able to set a policy and be able to follow that policy to guide our decisions and best practices around managing our pension debt in a more strategic manner, this will make better use of our resources.
Can I ask you a question on that one? Sorry, go ahead.
Let me just say one thing. If you go back to that slide, Catherine, we did incorporate the 15,000. This slide didn't get updated since the budget and audit committee. We hadn't incorporated it at the time, but the budget that's in front of you now does incorporate our prepayment benefit of 15,000. So we've already taken that into account in the net number. So I just wanted to clarify that, that doesn't look like that got captured in the update.
And I know I updated, I updated it somewhere, so it didn't get updated on this slide. Sorry. Did you have a question, Jeff?
Yeah, so you had mentioned about the approaching peak and then paying down or contributing such that we wouldn't have an unfunded liability. I just want to be clear, like, I don't think that obviates our ongoing pension expense that we would expect to see for as long as we have PERS employees that are taking, you know, that are participants within PERS. I think it would reduce it because we wouldn't have to contribute along the schedule for the unfunded liability. But, you know, you're talking 20, what was it, 2031, I think, or something like?
So 2031 is when, so the two largest plans are your two classic plans. And those, you know, have large unfunded liabilities. The Peppera plans' unfunded liabilities range from $1,800 a year to maybe 3,000 a year. So four plans are very, very small, and two plans are very large. And the two that are large are going to, we can pay at different, we can decide to pay at different schedules. So if we follow the normal schedule that CalPERS is giving us, we're going to reach the top in 2031, and then we'll start to decline and we'll come down. And eventually, in 2044, it will reach zero. But then it will get, whether, depending on how CalPERS does, it could get recalculated at that point.
Yeah, because I think that's a calculation at a point in time based on, you know, actual tables. And, you know, that's a long ways out. So I think it would be, it would be premature to assume that that would go to zero. I mean, CalPERS has historically set their discount rate much too high based on what the returns they've used. And then with the mortality tables, I just, I think that it just would be premature to make that assumption at this point. I would expect to be paying pension expense for PERS until there's no longer any participants in the two plans that you identified.
Yeah, it'll be a long time.
It will be a long way.
Yes, it will be a long time.
Yes, yes. So if you would like to see these major budget changes, we have them summarized on page 31 in the budget document that I already referred to. On page 44, we have a pie chart that refers to all the major costs by department. And as you can see, the police department uses about 40% of the, or takes up about 40% of the budget expenses. The city function is 21%. Admin, legal, and finance combined are 15.9%. Community development is 5.5%. General services are 4.3%. Clayton Community Park is 4%. Public Works is 3.2%. Engineering is 2.4%. The library is 1.9% and legislative is 1.4%.
Historically, the police was like closer to 50% was, what was the big change?
It's still about 51% if you take the ARPA funding out. Unfortunately, the way that chart is constructed is the city function is the ARPA dollars, and it grossly skews it. So in the text in the budget document, it mentions that we're still 51, 52% is, you know, outside of the ARPA funding is police spending.
Okay.
So some of the budget balancing strategies, which the Budget Audit Committee discussed, were as follows. They recommended we've eliminating or replacing one police vehicle or using SURF Fund 502 monies and not replenishing the general fund with SURF, and that would save $70,000. You could consider reducing or eliminating the city council and planning commission stipends, which would save about $40,000. We could consider canceling regional or state memberships, which would save about $12,000. And you could consider other recommendations that we haven't, we haven't proposed. So this is one that I think we'd like to come back to this, once we're done with the rest of the discussions of the funds. So if we, if we were to make those, if we were to make the recommendation of the 70,000, not replenishing SURF with the 70,000, this is what our our proposed transfer from our pandemic reserve would be, and our budget would be balanced. As you can see, the beginning balance is the 5.9% and the ending balance is 5.9%. So on to Landscape Maintenance District. The trails, and first of all, you can refer to the Landscape Maintenance District on page 65 of your budget. The Trails and Landscape Committee met twice this year, over the past month, to review their budget, and they recommend the proposed budget to the city council. There is a substantial fund balance that has been built up due to projects that haven't been done, or, you know, also COVID and turnover and people not being at work because of COVID. So this next budget year, they plan to complete multitude of projects that haven't been completed. This district typically uses most of its annual revenue with a minor fund balance on an ongoing basis. So that would be the goal, to use up the fund balance this year in the projects that need to be completed. And the year was about a $90,000 fund balance. This year, in fiscal year '22, we're ending with a projected close to $700,000 balance. The Neighborhood Streetlights Fund is a fund that is not, that the revenues are not keeping up with the cost of maintaining this district. And the primary driver is the increased cost of electricity, which is 80% of the cost of this district, our electric costs. So the projected and funding, the projected ending fund balance for the fiscal year '23 is in the red by $20,000. So we we are recommending to use pandemic recovery reserve funds to fund this, this gap. The stormwater fund is also a fund that is approaching being in the red. We believe that this year it will end slightly positive. However, there are new state mandated stormwater regulations, which are MRP 3.0, which is increasing the cost of compliance, if that includes staff time. The largest costs in this fund are street sweeping at $57,000 and state regional discharge fee at $11,000. So at the end of fiscal year '23, we're projecting an $8,500 fund balance, which is pretty small and could be used by, you know, if something came up that needed to happen, that's not a very large reserve or balance in that fund. So that's something that has to be thought about for future years. And the Clayton Financing Authority, which is Fund 405, we haven't used this fund. There's a pretty good fund balance in the Clayton Financing Authority Fund right now. At the end of fiscal year '22, we estimate around the $600,000 fund balance. So we have some work that has to be done in the library. HVAC work with controllers and other things, and that total around $75,000. So we're proposing to use Clayton Financing Authority funds to pay for the work in the library HVAC that needs to be done. The Pension Rate Stabilization Fund. This, I just wanted to call this fund out. It's basically, you know, a reserve fund for pension expenses. But I know that the city council has established this fund with a priority to, you know, have something for pension. It's not functioning like a trust might function, or like other, there are a few other, you know, things that you could do. But the fact that it's established is a good thing, and that we need to look at establishing both a pension and an OPEP policy to manage our pension and OPEP debt in a more strategic manner. So that's the main reason that I recalled this fund out. And right now, in fiscal year 2023, we will project a $297,000 fund balance here. And now that we are on to the American Rescue Plan Act, which we have already spoken about. So basically, Fund 111, this is a reminder, and Fund 232 kind of work together. Fund 232, the money comes into, but it's just transferred out back into the pandemic recovery reserve fund. And this fund, we only allocate at the direction of the city council. And basically, the ending fund balance will depend on what your priorities are and what you want to spend the money on. So I think as far as, this is all the same information that we've spoken about in the last item. So I don't know where you want to go from here, Rena.
So is that the last fund you were going to do? Do you want to move into the CIP real?
That is, yes, that's the last one.
There's the CIP. Look at that. So I'm going to just give a very brief overview of our capital improvement program. And our, by the way, our city engineer, our police chief, our community development director, they are on the line and are available for questions, if there are questions at any point for them. So we have a number of CIPs that we are going to be moving forward with this year. And so I'll just give you a brief overview and then can answer any questions about those as we complete the presentation. This North Valley playground renovation, there's one remaining component. The playground was completed quite some time ago, but we have an ADA drop-off that needs to be completed, so we will get that done this year. We put a small amount of money into an ADA transition plan compliance program every year so that we have a little bit of a fund available if things come up for one-off repairs that we need to do. Next slide, please. We have a number of roadway improvements. This is where we spend the bulk of our capital monies each year. We have a program that just came to the council for the 2023 Neighborhood Pavement Rehab Project. We are completing with that some streets that were initially part of the FY22 program that we weren't able to complete within the initial budget for that project. And so the first phase of that 2023 project, which is largely designed, will happen this year. There's a downtown pedestrian improvement project that is funded primarily through a Measure J Transportation for Global Communities grant that will do some raised crosswalks and some other visibility improvements in downtown. And the first phase of that, again, design will occur this year. And then we will also begin work on a local roadway safety plan, which is really, is required for any of the federal funding that is coming through CCTA in the next year to OBag III, as we refer to it, One Bay Area Grant III, third round of that. It's going to be required to have a local roadway safety plan. And while we don't necessarily think Clayton may have very many, if any, competitive projects in that grant cycle, Caltrans is also beginning to require local road safety plans for any of their grant programs, et cetera. So we know we need to get started on that, and that really just helps identify where are there areas where, you know, what does the accident data look like, et cetera, and where do we need to potentially look at work in the future? And then just the last piece will be completing the work that actually already got mentioned in public comment earlier and that we're following, we've already followed up with the contractor on some of the traffic safety measures, but we'll be completing the rest of that work later this month and into the first part of next year. So we're just going to complete that 2022 Neighborhood Pavement Rehab Project. So those are the main CIPs that are coming for FY23, largely with funds that have been accumulated from gas tax, the additional gas tax SB1 monies, the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account, or RMRA, and Measure J. Those are our major funding sources in addition to any specialized grants. So that is an overview of our capital program. That will also go to the Planning Commission on June 14th for their annual review in terms of conformance with the general plan. They're required to take that action. We're required to take it to them, so that will happen. And then ultimately, that will come back with the budget on June 21st. And I think with that, are there any other slides, Catherine?
No, but we could go back to.
So now really the question is, what questions does the council have? I can bring the other staff in if there are questions about other departments. And we have already had quite a bit of discussion about the pandemic recovery reserve. So Catherine, you want to stop sharing your screen for a minute? And I think it's easier for the mirror to see everybody. There we go.
Awesome. Let's bring it back to questions to council. Are there any questions of staff regarding the presentation that you received?
I have one that I wanted to dig a little bit more into, the Landscape Maintenance District. I just lost the page, but it was the Cardenet Trail repaving. There are several residents that have questioned why we would spend $185,000 on a portion of the trail. Can you elaborate on that a little bit, please?
Sure. That is a portion of trail that goes near the 11th Fairway from the Cardenet Trail up to Oakhurst Boulevard. And this has been on the docket to do for at least three years. It is a completion of a larger plan of improvements to the trails in that sort of area of town. And the reason for And the reason for doing it, first of all, paving is ridiculously expensive and so it sounds like it's a huge project, it's not that big a project, but it is, it is quite expensive. There are some segments of that trail that are very badly damaged due to roots and that are quite uneven and need to be um, flattened out for safety reasons, and so we want to get that done. One of the things that we have talked about with the city engineer, it, or one of the things that has been mentioned is, is really doing a, a, a little bit further evaluation to make sure that we do the most cost effective trail repair there that, um, we do the minimum required, not the maximum, um, in terms of the paving work. And it has been a number of years since anybody has really taken a hard look at that, so, um, I will be asking Larry to take a look at that. And we did talk about that with the Trails and Landscape Committee members. They had some similar questions about, hmm, is this really the thing and is this really the most important thing? We really need to evaluate what it is we need to do for, um, correcting that, those segments of pavement that are uneven and broken up, um, so that we have a good safe trail through there and we will do that. If it turns out to be less expensive, that's great. Um, it's also a very difficult area to get any equipment into, so it's kind of expensive to handle from that area, but that's why that segment is still in the Landscape Maintenance District Budget for this year. I will say that in conjunction with that conversation, we also discussed and is also in the Landscape Maintenance District Budget is some money to have, uh, our city engineer or a sub to the city engineer help us really put together kind of a strategic plan for identifying and prioritizing further trail projects, um, as we go forward. Because we don't, we don't have a clear plan of what, what do we need to do next, right? We're sort of finishing up work that had been identified before and we really need to have a picture of where we want to go next. And so the committee was, was very interested in doing that planning work and so that's in the budget as well. So we're completing the work that had been identified before and we're setting ourselves up to have a plan to go forward. Um, and I will say your Trails and Landscape Committee was adamant that we have to have a plan about what we're going to do and we can't just be, um, you know, kind of scrambling at the last minute always to figure out like, what's the next thing, what's the next thing? We have to have a, a more structured approach, so. Um, they're doing a good job in thinking through, um, what it is that we need to be doing, um, as staff. And so we're, we're, we're on that and I was, I was really pleased to be able to say that we're going to be able to put that in the budget and start doing that planning work.
I just want to confirm, um, the eleventh green, is that near where the maintenance structure is next to Diablo Creek? And that goes across the golf course all the way up to Oakhurst Drive?
No, it's, um, it's farther, um, gosh, my sense of direction is stupid, but if you're walking away from City Hall, let's put that way, and the maintenance yard for the, um, golf courses behind you, it's you keep walking and when you hit the, um, I think it's the second pedestrian bridge, there's a pedestrian bridge and then there's a trail section that heads kind of uphill to the right. Toward the golf course, that's the eleventh fairway. Um, and so it's that segment of trail that comes off of Cardenet up toward Oakhurst Boulevard.
Pretty steep and definitely, uh, got.
That fenced in area up there where, where the.
Trees, it has fence, it has a narrow path and it has very broken up.
I know what you're talking about now, thanks.
Um, I did want to go to the actual like synopsis that was, it looks like it's on page, there is no page number, I think it's in the staff report. Page two of the staff report, um, where it gives, um, a debrief of what we talked about in the Budget Audit Committee, uh, meeting and, um, specifically the, uh, where is it? No, this is not it, there was a.
On page two of the staff report.
I can see that, I see the synopsis, but there was another, uh, chart, I thought that Catherine had showed that, um, balanced the budget. That showed that if we, um, eliminated stipends and then, um, that was about forty thousand and then the, um, the additional, um, groups that we belong to, uh, like Cal Cities, for example, and our, um, A-Bag. I, I can't find that page number right now, though. Which page?
You don't have that exact version of that, that's why you don't see it, um, but Catherine can reshare her screen and have allergies, so, sorry.
Yes, please. Um, the main reason I wanted to look at that is it looked like she said if those things were all done, everything that was listed in that table, then the, the budget is balanced. And so I wanted us as a council to have a discussion about that. Um, when Councilmember Juan brought it up during our, um, Budget Audit Committee meeting, I was opposed to both of those things, but I didn't want to speak for the entire council, which is why I asked staff to make sure that it was brought back before all of us to have a discussion about it. Because I do think that those are two, um, issues that have come up before in the past, um, and that we had kind of opined on, oh, thank you, Catherine. Yes, that's it. I'm not, yeah, but there's a table that you had that showed that we would be balanced, that one. I think it's.
I didn't assume any of those other things, other than the seventy thousand.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, that's helpful. Um, okay, so then, um, so pushing off the police vehicle then would balance the budget, is that what you're saying?
The, the, the general fund budget alone has a hundred and seven-ish thousand, um, dollar deficit. If we don't make the general fund contribution to the Capital Equipment Replacement Fund, either because we spend down the SURF balance or because we funded through the Pandemic Recovery Reserve, whatever mechanism we use, that saves seventy thousand. So now we're down to thirty seven, one thirty nine, which is what you see on the next slide that, that Catherine showed. And then we have a thirty seven thousand, one hundred and thirty nine thousand dollar nut to crack. That could be done via the recommended, uh, transfer from the Pandemic Recovery Reserve. Other things that were identified in the Budget Audit Committee, as you pointed out, items two and three. Those are items that aren't recommended, but were asked to be brought back for discussion. And then, of course, anything else that the council wanted to discuss in terms of potential reductions.
Okay, great, thank you. That's helpful.
Okay, I think you can take that down, Catherine, thank you.
Why is the police, uh, vehicle, why is that recommended?
So, um, there, there are a couple of reasons, it's, it's a big chunk of money. Um, and it is, um, we have some flexibility on the timing of, um, a payment or the, the timing of a vehicle replacement. And, um, it's, it's a pretty common thing to come up in budget reduction conversations to put off for a year, uh, replacing a vehicle and, and there was some discussion at the Budget Audit Committee about potentially not replacing a vehicle and pushing that off for a year. Essentially, you just then are a year behind forever until you, you know, happen to have some other source of funds, uh, et cetera. Um, the revised recommendation after the Budget Audit Committee is don't make the general fund contribution, but replace the police vehicle using either Pandemic Recovery Reserve Funds or there's a balance that we carry in that Capital Equipment Replacement Fund because you always need to have some balance when you're talking about, um, maintaining an asset like your vehicle fleet. So replace the vehicle either from the balance that's in the Capital Equipment Replacement Fund, which you still have to backfill the following year or the year after. At some point, you, you, you have to catch yourself up or from the Pandemic Recovery Reserve because we do have those funds to allow for um, helping stabilize the budget, um, over the next several years. Um, so it, the recommendation, to be clear, is not that we don't do the vehicle purchase, but that we change the means by which we do the vehicle purchase from the general fund to either SURF or Pandemic Recovery Reserve.
Thank you.
It sounds like, um, using the funds as a one-time use from our pandemic recovery funds gets the bill for one-time use for the definition of our previous conversation. Would, would that be a, uh, a true statement? What are your thoughts?
I would say yes and no. Um, a, a purchase of a vehicle is a one-time cost, so it is a one-time cost. However, we replace a police vehicle every year in order to keep our fleet reasonably current. We have about eight police vehicles, um, an eight-year replacement cycle is a pretty reasonable cycle for this, the size ge- geography that we have. And, uh, so it's not a one-time expense in the sense that we have to do one-ish every year. Um, we, we do plan to try to get some information about potential leasing or if there are any other options, but frankly, we have such a small fleet that we may not be able to get any other, um, uh, leasing or other financing mechanisms that, that bring it down much below seventy thousand a year. So, um, it is not a one-time expense in that regard because we, we, we do have to keep it up in the future, so we aren't making a structural change in our budget by putting it to another fund source for a single year.
Um, I'll just state, uh, my opinion on local, uh, agencies or organizations we belong to. Um, I know specifically the amount of assistance that our city has received relative to its, um, being a part of A-Bag. I know there's a lot of consternation out there regarding the presence of a dog back in the first place, I get that. Um, but if we're going to have, uh, obligations thwarted upon us like the housing element, it's good to get the assistance that we actually receive from A-Bag to actually stick, be in compliance, the value of their, um, the, the documents and the support that we've received and then, uh, from that over the past, uh, few months as we've gotten the housing a little bit together has been crazy, um, as far as the you know, how it's helped our staff. And had we not been a part of A-Bag and not received that help, the cost for us to be in compliance would be substantially higher. Did you talk to that, um, uh, Raina, just out of curiosity?
Um, I, I can, um, and I have, I can bring Dana in if, if, uh, needed as well, but, um, A-Bag, uh, did, um, a number of things to help make our Housing Element Update a more cost-effective process. One, we were able to get the, um, license for Balancing Act, so we got some assistance in, in, um, creating an additional tool for input. Uh, A-Bag also created, uh, a full, um, data packet for every city. So we did not have to compile and identify all of the in, number of, um, data sources that we would need to, um, pull together in order to meet the requirements that HCD puts on the Housing Element. Um, they provided, uh, additionally for a number of communities through something that A-Bag funded additional assistance in putting together the sections on a formidably furthering fair housing. Um, each of those things saved us money, time and effort that we would otherwise have had to fund from city funding. Um, so, you know, it, it's hard to put a dollar amount on it, but it's in the tens of thousands of dollars easily. Um, based on, on the work that A-Bag did, uh, and funded from their funds rather than our funds.
And can you confirm our annual cost, uh, to be a part of A-Bag?
Uh, A-Bag, both A-Bag and Cal Cities are each about six thousand dollars.
So if we save tens of thousands of dollars this year by paying six thousand dollars to be a part of it, it seems like a heck of a deal, in my opinion. And.
It's been a good, um, return on investments.
And I'll go to the next, uh, item, which is Cal Cities. I know that Cal Cities or League of California Cities has has caused consternation to some, but I will say specifically that our being involved in these local organizations and having a lobbying presence on our behalf. Um, and being involved in the conversation on a regional level with our peers in these meetings is been an invaluable resource. We, we matter. We are not an island, we are actually part of the conversation and not just that small city on the hill that wants to be isolationist. Um, I, uh, I, I appreciate my peers in the organization that I meet with and talk with on a regular basis and that's because we're a part of that organization and, uh, to have a six thousand dollar cost associated with being a part of that, I think the return on investment is equally as valuable and I just thought of doing that out there.
So, yeah, so, uh, League of California Cities, now that I have my numbers in front of me, are, is about sixty two hundred dollars and actually A-Bag is only about thirty five hundred.
Thank you very much for those numbers. Any other comments from, from, uh, council or, or questions, uh, uh, of staff regarding items that are on, uh, that were presented by, uh, staff?
Go ahead. Sorry, certainly for, for my benefit as being mayor, uh, last year, Cal, Cal Cities was very valuable to me uh, with regard to, uh, developing relationships with various, uh, uh, cities and, and state and local authorities and people uh, that know a lot about what's going on out there. And, you know, I, Clayton is like Horton here as a who, you know, it's, we are here, we are here. And, uh, you know, we're, we're a tiny, tiny little peep, but we gotta, uh, I think that it's, it's invaluable that we stay connected to, um, to our fellow cities and our, uh, and, uh, it, it's, it's a very valuable thing to, to me, even at the, at the convention, I got a chance to uh, sit down and actually talk with a lot of people and, and, uh, found out a lot of information that I didn't know. I think Jim could probably say the same with regard to the classes that we attended there. Um, so I think that's a very valuable organization for us to continue to belong to. Um, I, I'm still confused with regard to the, with the, uh, the police, uh, recommendation to with the police vehicle. Um, I'm on the fence with that because I want to make sure that we don't, uh, handcuff our police department in any way. So, uh, but, uh, and, and A-Bag, again, I, I, I agree with Peter, I think it's a, it's another valuable resource for us. Anytime we can connect, uh, it, it then get a seat at the table is so much better for, for us.
And again, just on the police vehicle, it doesn't change anything about making sure that our police fleet stays up to date. It changes the funding source for one year to allow us to, um, get through this year, uh, when we know we have other budget challenges.
Any other questions of staff? Seeing none, um, it is appropriate at this time to open up item number nine B to public comment. If there are people out there who are still online and listening to this conversation and you'd like your three minutes to talk about item nine B and, and, and the budget itself, now is the time for you to raise your hand and be called upon. Janet, how are we doing and is there, uh, any hands out there this late hour?
I have one hand raised. Ed, as I promote you to panelists, you will have three minutes to speak if you can please unmute your microphone.
Oh, there we go. Sorry, I was apparently muted. Yes, this is Ed Miller and I just wanted to make a brief, um, I just, uh, share a brief thought with you guys, which I don't think will impact something this year because it would require a great deal of thinking and planning, but I know that there's a desire to have, um, higher, uh, staff salaries for retention and so forth, uh, you know, as time goes on and whatnot. Um, one of the questions I wanted to pose is, um, I, I know that there are shared police departments among like Lafayette and, uh, Danville, Aranda, so forth, some of the smaller towns and we're a smaller town. So I wondered if there might be a concept of a shared municipal. So I wondered if there might be a concept of a shared municipal municipal services district or something. And and there might be a window of opportunity uh to consider something like this that would be unique. And that is, I I know that Danville, having had the the Sheriff's Department, the the shooting uh last year, the county has asked the Sheriff's Department to look at and consider whether or not they want to continue to uh offer uh the Sheriff's Department to be uh a consolidated police services for them. So if if the county pulls back, uh the Sheriff's Department has a central place that Lafayette and Danville and some of these other smaller towns can uh do a pooled uh police force. There may be an opportunity for us to jump in with those other small cities and form a consolidated municipal services district or something uh together. Again, I apologize that this is not a uh anything that's going to save us any money this year or whatnot, but being able to share um costs of something like a, you know, a police chief or or something like that across uh other smaller towns that uh you know, struggle with these larger costs might uh enable us to offer a good salary to um both, you know, a single chief that's shared and also the officers that are just participating among them. And with that, that's really all I had to say. I I appreciate the opportunity to have had enough a chance to make a comment on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ed. Appreciate your comments. Janet, are there any other hands that are out there to discuss this item?
Uh, yes, I have a couple of hands that just went up. Uh, Marcia, as I promote you to panelists, if you can please unmute your microphone, you will have three minutes to speak.
Am I unmuted?
Marcia, welcome. You have
Thank you. Pretty unmuted. I've been talking for five minutes already. Anyway, um, I was interested in this idea of the eight police cars. How many policemen do we have on staff uh that are on duty at any one time? Do we really need eight police cars? For eleven thousand people? And that's that was my first question. And I really liked Ed's idea of pooling together with Danville, Lafayette, some of the other smaller towns that maybe we could save some money by not having to have everything duplicated with each town. That was, those were my major thoughts, listening to this.
Thank you, Marcia. I appreciate your question. I noticed that Chief Crines is on um unavailable for that to answer your question on that. Uh, do you want to try to answer that yourself, um, Raina? Regarding the 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 number of cars we have relative to our need.
Uh, I have uh brought the chief in the hopes to, I mean, I I can give you a general answer. Um, it really has to do with the fact that um, you know, we may have uh typically two officers on, but we, you know, in some cases have three and then, you know, we can't run the same police vehicle twenty-four seven all the time. So we need to have a backup vehicle and um then we have special event requirements, et cetera. So it is um not a an unusually high number for the size of department we have. Uh, so uh, Chief, if you have anything else to add to my very general summary, um, please do so.
Now, I I agree with what you said um in regards to the amount of vehicles. Um, we rotate the vehicles and yeah, you can't run the cars twenty-four seven. Uh, generally, we'll have a supervisor and two officers on, so three officers at at any given time and sometimes a fourth officer. Um, and 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 then for special events, we'll add on usually two to three officers um working, you know, when we do have a special event. So obviously we need more cars at that particular time. Uh, but those, you know, those are few and far between, but nevertheless, um, yeah, the reason we have that many cars is so that we can rotate them uh and move them around in service. We tend to keep the cars for about ninety thousand miles, so we get quite a bit of miles on them. But those are hard miles uh on a police car. Uh, and we have to recognize that that car is in fact the the officer's office space, if you will. Um, and you know, they need that necessary equipment that comes with that car. And so um it's not an unreasonable amount of of cars for the organization.
Thank you, Chief Crines. And just as a personal observation, um, on the day I was doing the uh Career Day, DVMS Principal Fong specifically asked for police car presence at his school and the elementary school because of the trepidations that parents were feeling relative to the shooting in Texas. And um with no challenge at all, our police were quickly there with police cars to be there uh for calming presence to our our parents. Um, so again, uh, it's another way that they're using, much appreciated. You're welcome. Thank you. Um, and I will go back to the board. Is there any, are there any other hands up, Janet, for this item?
Yes, I have one other hand. James, as I promote you to panelists, if you can please unmute your microphone, you will have three minutes to speak.
Hi there. Um, I want to let everybody know that I'm very appreciative of all the hard work you do as a city council, also our city workers. Very quick, um, if my whole impression of listening to this long meeting here and which is very valuable is that don't over rationalize what you need to do here. Approve it and and get the get everything you need to get done. Um, I know we like to count our pennies, but you have much more bigger strategic issues to deal over the next two years and and also you're dealing with significant inflation. Um, one other thing I want to say is getting an accountant at a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that's where where I've made my money as as an accounting finance uh for the last thirty years. And when I talk to people, small business owners and people in the in the working for larger companies, a senior analyst is typically going for around a hundred and forty to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in salary. And so trying to get a hundred thousand dollars, if you can find someone, that's a bargain. So again, great work to everyone. Don't don't, it's getting late in the hour. Just get this thing approved and and really focus on what you need to do for next year. Thanks.
Thank you, James. I thank you for your patience and and being present at many meetings, Budget Nautic Committee and and for others, your voice is appreciated. Janet, are there any other phone, any other uh hands up with this item?
Mayor Clovan, I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
Excellent. And with that, I will close public comment on item number nine B and bring it back to discussion uh to the council. Does any council member have any com- comment or conversation about this item?
I'd like to uh second the motion that Mr. Killen just made.
Not exactly how that works, but thank you very much, Councilmember Wolf.
I try.
I I would really, you know, in light of the hour, I would say, you know, I think the most important um thing for for um us to to move this forward, are there things that um, you know, the council very clearly wants to see or not see when we bring this back ultimately for uh public hearing and adoption in uh two weeks?
I just have a few comments, if if that's okay. You know, I think that so from when we met as a subcommittee, the police vehicle was one item that was presented as an option. Uh, I don't think at that time you had indicated that that was a recommended choice. And so I I'm glad that through a discussion, um, you know, you found a way that we can still acquire the vehicle on schedule this year. And you know, defer contribution to the thing if necessary to alleviate the budget. I mean, really what we're talking about on the deficit side is is approximately a hundred and seven thousand dollars. Uh, that does not include the the neighborhood streetlights uh numbers. When you add in the streetlights, it goes up another whatever it goes up, twenty thousand, twenty thousand dollars. The one of the reasons why I had made suggestions during the subcommittee of the various cuts is not necessarily um because these are the most effective cuts to be made. Uh, but it it struck me as as um odd that we would have, we have significant, well, significant, I guess, is a subjective term. We have budget deficits. And we knew that we would have deficits projected or based on prior projections. Uh, but we did not have any cuts proposed. And instead, you know, we were taking the position that we would utilize reserve funding to cover those things. And I think that it was mentioned in the past and some of our other meetings when we were beginning to have the budget discussions that, you know, prior councils knew that this was coming and we did deferred action until that time. So, you know, this is, this is that time where, you know, if we if we do not choose to make cuts, it is essentially deferring that action again. And I think, you know, we, there's been a lot of talk about a potential revenue measure for tax, you know, tax increase to raise revenue. It's very, I think it's a very difficult story to support um a tax measure when the city itself is not making any cuts itself, but rather using reserve spending to run out the clock until it's such time that that happens. And even so, logistically, when you look at a potential tax measure in twenty twenty-four, you know, that doesn't go, you know, that votes in November of twenty-four. It 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 would be applicable sometime thereafter, and then you would actually receive the increased fund. You'd have to have your twenty-four budget or your sorry, your FY twenty-five budget done prior to that anyways. Um, and you're looking at something like a three-year runway. And so if you, if we choose to not make any cuts now, we're essentially saying that for the next, whatever time it takes until that comes to fruition or not, we're going to, you know, have deficit spending. And I just, I think we have ways to balance the budget in the current year um without reserve spending. And, you know, as a general principle, I'm pretty much opposed to to reserve spending uh for non uh one-time items. So that's, that's, that is the rationale for proposing those cuts. Um, and I I do think that we we do need to, as a city, look at the the stru- the overall structure of our spend and look for ways to do to make strategic cuts that are significant so that we could address the deficit um on an operational basis. Now, the previous conversation we had regarding one-time thing, I kind of separate those things because those are, those are those, those don't build up your your ongoing operational spend. But, you know, these things that we're talking about here, uh, I I really do think that we need to have, we need to have that discussion around like, I I I would like to see where we can make cuts to balance the budget uh without uh reserve spending for operational needs. Um, the other, the other item was kind of piggybacking off of the comment that Holly made earlier about the LMD and and prioritization. It wasn't ea- it wasn't very easy for me to to determine what the ongoing fund balance was from the document. I think it's on page sixty-five, but you know, I I understand that that section of the carnet trail, um, it's a small section and it's it's in disrepair, so it does need for a safety issue need to get worked on. You know, there there is a bit of buildup of reserve within the LMD as a result of well, many things. Co- COVID and and the associated fallout from that is is probably a large part of it. Um, but, you know, I would suggest that we utilize those to catch up on some of the work that wasn't done. And we we essentially do a a, I don't know, I don't know what to call it, a surge or something to address some of the some of the landscape, fo- the focus on landscape areas that hadn't been done as much as in the past. It, you know, you can't talk to talk to that many people without hearing things regarding the, you know, the nature of the state of landscaping. And I really do think that uh in the areas that were deferred, I think that that would be a good use. I mean, we have here, you know, when I look at the the proposed projects for the following year, you know, tree trimming and carnet trail and trail reconstruction. Um, you know, I I don't know if it, where it would make sense, but I would, I would ask the LMD, the committee to to look at, you know, things that these types of projects that could be deferred in lieu of getting our landscaping back up to to where it was in the past. So that was my only comment there.
Um, the committee did actually think tree trimming was pretty important and it's a significant component, so that
Trees look great, the trees look great, by the way.
The landscaping and and we we have, um, our contractor has been out very actively um in the last uh month and a half or so. So um we are making improvements in that. But it very much to your point, the committee wants an understanding of kind of what's the universe of things so that they can figure out how to prioritize. You know, is it, you know, investing in um additional uh planting of um, you know, native wildflowers to try to drive out invasive weeds and um that kind of thing. So you'll see some of that in the budget as well, but we really need to have the plan that the committee has asked us to put together in order to drive that. And that's under engineering services. It's a pretty
Is that, oh, is that listed as one of the projects for LMD in twenty-three or is that, is that outside?
It is, um, it's not listed as a project, yes, it is, Strategic Safety Sustainability Plan.
Oh, is that what that's supposed to mean? Okay.
You couldn't come up with a good name for it. Everybody wanted to call it some, one of those things. So we called it all of those things. Um, but that's really a a way to say, you know, what what is the universe of things? What needs to be done? And then have the committee help with um both, um, you know, kind of the pulse of the community, but also prioritization. And so that's what that's for. That's why that's in there. Um, the rest of it is
Yeah, that's great. That's great. Cause I I I couldn't tell what that was. I didn't, I didn't know what that was. Um, okay, cool. So uh, if that's the case, then, you know, hopefully as as they do their work, that'll that'll flesh itself out. Cause I I do think that, you know, with the buildup, you have an op, we have an opportunity to to utilize that on what the community prioritization is for that. So that'd be great, but but yes, so. You're on mute, Holly.
There's I meant to turn it off earlier. Thank you. I was saying, Raina, can you also elaborate more on what the committee discussed um in regards to having since we're in a drought, that there wouldn't be any new plantings because we are in a drought, et cetera. So to Jeff's point about um making it look like it did in the past or residents uh wishes to have it look like it did in the past, that's not going to happen in the medians because we're in a drought. Um, so I'll let Raina elaborate a little bit more.
Um, thank you, Vice Senator Tillman. We are not really going to do any new planting except for some um uh extra um non planting of native wildflowers to help drive out non-native invasive weeds. It's a mouthful at ten forty-eight at night. And um a- a- again, having a plan really allows us to work with the committee to determine, okay, if we're not going to do new plantings because that may not make sense for several years. You know, what is it we're going to do? What are the assets that we want to manage better? Um, you know, do we need more uh frequent weed abatement in certain areas? Do we need more tree trimming? Do we need, you know, what is it that we need? But um uh, y- you know, on a point that that you have brought up in the past and that I've started to work with staff more on, you know, having a a yearly schedule of all of those things, you know, like when are we going to get to each of those things so that we know what our, you know, preventive maintenance for landscaping is versus, you know, the more um periodic needs, et cetera. So um, that's, I I I think what you're saying is very much in line with with where the the committee wants to go and and kind of what our our plan is moving forward.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah. I mean, I I don't know how many conversations I've had with folks and really it's when is this going to happen? And without the plan, it's it's hard to it's hard to fall back on the actual information, which is, which would be really helpful to facilitate that. I think, you know, when people are when people would like to see different results than they're seeing, uh, it helps to be able to assage those concerns by by demonstrating that there is a plan, it's it's being followed. And that way, I mean, I think that both gives It's, it's being followed. And that way, I mean, I think that both gives transparency, but it also provides a mechanism for accountability as well. So I, I, I really like plans. So I'm glad to see that. Thank you. But yeah, back, I mean, back to the other, I just, you know, I, I couldn't contend having a budget that shows a deficit and then depends on reserve funding without any attempt to make cuts. I, I just, I think that's irresponsible. And it does kick the can down the road essentially, so.
I think that kicking the can down the road was something that I was too, too thrilled about doing. But judging by what our, our survey came back and told us that it's inevitable. Until we get the public to understand what we're actually facing budget-wise, unless we make meaningful cuts. And I don't, I don't really see what we have on the table as being meaningful cuts. We do have reserve funding from the federal funds, which I don't look at as reserve funds either. So I, I think that money is there for us to help if, if we're not kicking the can down the road, at least pushing it down a little bit until we can get the citizens to understand what, what we're actually facing on a long-term basis. So I don't, I don't see it that, that these cuts are meaningful enough to make a difference where someone will wake up and say, oh, they made cuts. I'm, I'm not sure that that's the case. If we were to lose an officer, I mean, look at it, look at it this way. We, we lost our police chief. She went somewhere else and took a demotion to go somewhere else. You know, if we lost an officer or something like that, I think that would make people stand up and say, wait a minute, what's going on? Ninety-four percent of the people in that survey like Clayton the way that it is, but nobody wants to pay for it. So we have to figure out a way to make them understand that they're going to have to pay for it down the road. We can make all the cuts, we can, but that's what the previous councils have done. They've made all these cuts and, and now we're where we are. So I say, thank goodness that we have the ARPA funding to look at. So that gives us a little bit of leeway to make a, to formulate a real solid plan.
Yeah, I mean, ARPA is allowing us to even have this conversation. Without ARPA, I mean, I think it's, we're, we're in a different spot. You know, I look at it as, at what we are faced with right now and what we're going to be faced with in the future. You know, right now, the deficit is $107,000. So to say that that's not a big deal and then we should use reserve funding to cover it, I, I, I would, I would definitely be opposed to that. I, I think, you know, we can, we have the means to solve that deficit right now. And, or maybe not right now, tonight, but right now in this cycle. And, and we can, we can address the current year deficit and then continue to have discussion about the future deficits that, that may come to pass as well. But we have a $107,000 deficit this year. It's going to be a greater number next year, most likely, and it will be a greater number the year thereafter. And I think if I do my math correctly thereafter as well. So, you know, if not, we will need to make cuts. I don't know how we would save those, these reserves and not make any cuts. I don't, I don't think that. Well, I mean, in my view, that would be irresponsible when we can address the current deficit now.
Yeah, but I, you and I have a philosophical difference then because.
We certainly do.
When I look at A-BAG and I look at the, what I talked about earlier with Cal Cities, I don't think that's, that's a non-starter for me. The stipend, you know, again, it's, I don't think we're going to get any, if you take away the stipend for the city council and the, and the planning commission, on an ongoing basis, I don't think we're going to attract the kind of talent or people that want to. I mean, really, how do you, how do you pay to get a job that doesn't pay you? And, and I think we're also more accountable because we get something that the, that the public gives us. But aside from that, the, what you're trying to do here, I think, is to get us out of organizations that I believe that we need to stay in. I don't think.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not talking about the organization.
I don't think these are the right cuts. If we make those cuts now, we're out of those organizations until we find a way to rejoin them. I don't want to go down that road.
We can table, we can set aside the organizational thing. These were just ideas. But if you talk about not funding the police vehicle and, and removing the stipend, the budget is balanced.
Yeah, but then, but then again, you're going on, on, on a long-term basis with regard to whether or not people will sign up to even do this job.
I, I would hope that people would sign up.
And you would hope, but that's not necessarily.
If they're signing up for the $5,000.
Yeah.
That they get, that's not, that's not a good decision-making process.
The first, the first year of my, of my being on the council, I worked for free because I had to pay back my campaign. And so you have to, you have to balance this in some way. And I don't see that the stipend is even, doesn't make a hill of beans a difference, except on a long-term basis. Might, you're saving $40,000 a year, but is that really a significant cut? And is it worth putting this job on the, on the back burner for some people? Some people may look at it and say, I can't, I can't do this job for nothing.
That is true. That is true. I, I do think, you know, the 40,000-ish represents approximately just shy of 40% of the deficit.
This.
So of this deficit. So whether, I mean, if that is, if that is significant, then that's really a judgment call. But, you know, I would, I would question anyone who does this, who does this role for the money because they are a terrible decision-maker because you don't get very much money. And, you know, your hourly rate, your hourly rate is like criminal. And, you know, you're, we are all essentially volunteers anyways. So I, I just, I, I can't see it. And plus, it impacts, it does not impact city services one bit. And it's 40% of the deficit. So like, I, I just don't see, you know, I, I just don't see it as, there's not a lot of reason why it would exist anyways. Plus it's purzable, which is also bad. So, you know, you know how much I hate pears. So kill two birds with one stone is, is great. But, you know, like that, like I said, we may have a philosophical difference on that. I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
I just want to, I figure out, I'm making about $4.25 an hour for what I do. So yeah, it, it, it's, it's obnoxious.
Criminal, criminal.
It, it, it's, it's obnoxiously low, but at the same point, when somebody stops me in the street and says, I pay your salary, there's a certain level of accountability because they, they actually do. And for me to be a, a pure volunteer on this becomes almost mercenary. And so just the, the ability to look in the eyes and say, yeah, you do, and have that accountability makes sense to me. It, this is, I, I, I think that this is a, you brought this up before and I appreciate it when you brought it up last year, Jeff. I, I, but I think from, from a standpoint of, from a, how small this is relative to the whole budget and what the larger questions are. I think we got, we, we got other, other things to do, and I, I disagree with you on this particular point as well.
Yep. I, like I said, I'm comfortable with that. I, I think, you know, having, having no cuts is, like I said, I, I feel like that's irresponsible. And if you, if you have a budget that has a deficit that doesn't propose any cuts, I'm not.
I think, isn't, isn't that what ARPA funding was supposed to do? Is it create a soft landing for some of the financial challenges that cities were having right now? This is exactly what the funds were made for in the, in the first place. And that's part of the reason why in the earlier discussion on item nine A, that I wanted to make sure that some of those funds were reserved for a, again, community ambassadors to have these discussions on budget, take it out of the elected's hands and put it in some very responsible, nonpartisan hands and get the word out through their eyes and their, and the evaluation of our budgets. And we have two years to have, make that happen. And if they're putting out quarterly notices i- in a public forum where people are reading it and they are the trusted voices to hear from, I mean, that's exactly the type of way that, that these ARPA funds should be used is, is to help educate, not educate, but inform the people where we are. And that was, that was what I was thinking.
We also don't have to wait two years, right? So I understand what you're saying about having these, the residents get together and form a committee. But this budget will be approved this month. And it doesn't mean that we can't start having conversations about what, what larger cuts we want to have. And if, if Jeff really wants to make cuts and, and it's sounding like at least the majority of us don't want to have those two particular things be cut this cycle, let's come up with two other things that balance the budget. It doesn't need to be those two. I think he was throwing those two things out because it seems like low-hanging fruit. But if we really want to roll up our sleeves and do the hard work and, and come up with other things to cut, then let's do that. But I said at the budget, not a committee, those two were a non-starter for me as well.
The, the thing that, the, the overall impression that I was getting, it was going to be cut on the back of our staff. And if I went just, just look back at the last 12 years, I think we've been balancing our budgets based on the backs of our staffs for long enough. They're already significantly lower paid than the people around them. And I think that that's the way we've been budgeting, balancing our budgets is making sure we pay our staff low and make, and make them work like crazy. And.
Well, I, I think one of the suggestions that was offered, not suggestion, sorry. One of the items that was offered was not doing COLA, rolling back staff wages. And those were not things that I would suggest or were, can, so it's, I, it's, this is not on the backs of staff. This is on the backs of us. That, that's the difference. Like I, I, I didn't, I, I both myself and Holly both said the, the item that was offered, or sorry, that was listed as a potential cut for COLA. We both said that's not something that we were interested in doing. So it's not, I, I don't consider this on the backs of staff at all. I don't think that's a fair characterization.
I noticed that being up on the items for discussion earlier.
If I may jump in here for a second, first of all, I believe that even though I may not agree on how it all worked out, but we are somewhat blessed by the fact that some of those people in that crazy city called Washington DC gave us some funds. I think we ought to, at least in this regard, use them as a bridge. That's how I view it. Secondly, I've mentioned this before tonight, we need to do, we're, 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 we're wandering around here trying to figure out what to do. We need some, you know, we've spent money on consultants that I did not agree with. The survey being number one. Why not use some of this money to fund an organizational analysis? We have never done that and it's time to do it. I think we could redistribute some of the workload on staff, maybe bring in this, this accountant that seems to be, in my view, on par with this finance director. But we need to take a look at all of the functions in City Hall. And I would bet that if we brought in the right entity to come in and do an analysis, we would find ways to save money and redistribute the work. So that's, that's my view. I think pulling the stipend is so symbolic of nothing other than, I, I, I can't even believe it was brought up. That's not the way to do this. We need to look at the critical work that's being done at City Hall and find out a better way to do it.
Well, that, that I could get behind.
That won't solve our issue between now and the end of the month. I agree. I, I think it's definitely something that needs to be done and very important work to do. And I was not opposed to using the ARPA funds, as Jim called it, a bridge. I didn't call it that, but I can go along with that language as well for this time around. But if the majority of us do want to come up with a way to, to cut costs, not using staff as a way to do that, but looking, I know that that was what staff presented to the budget, not a committee. Those are just suggestions that Jeff and I both said we didn't agree with. Hold on, excuse me. But I'm also okay with that as well because what I don't want to happen, which is, I'm sure people are already on Nextdoor writing about it right now, is how we couldn't balance a budget without having to use federal funds. And we were gonna, you know, have a tax measure on the ballot this year. Like I, I want all of that to be quiet because that has nothing to do.
We're not going to have a tax measure on the ballot this year.
I know we're not, Jim. I know we're not. That was a discussion a few months ago. And my point is, is that people are on Nextdoor complaining about things as opposed to actually speaking out here in the meetings. They do it on social media and get people riled up. And so if we're going to make hard decisions, I'd rather that this body do it here instead of on social media with people squawking at them. That's my point. So if we're going to make hard decisions, let's decide to do that tonight. I know it's 11:05, I'm going to do that.
That's our job. Social media is, is worthless in my, in my mind. I don't even, I don't even open that door. It's a quagmire. It's a, it's a tar baby. You can't get away from it. The bottom line is.
I don't think that's an appropriate term anymore, Jim.
But let me just say this. The fact is, we spent $30,000 and got the answers we knew. We could have used that $30,000 to do an organizational analysis.
But that money also was ARPA funded.
You were correct. So it didn't come out of the pockets of the citizens. Maybe overall.
That's not, that's not true. ARPA funds is out of the pockets of the citizens. It's out of your pockets, out of my pocket, and it goes, it's treated, it's treated no differently than general fund reserves. This farce that we keep saying that this is different is just that. It is a farce. I mean, the fact is, it is, there is no difference in character than general fund reserves. And you can call it whatever you want, but it's, it behaves exactly the same way. And so any, I mean, you can call it whatever, but it's a, it's a, it's a lie you're telling yourself.
So let's, let's get back to what we're doing tonight. We have a public hearing on the 21st to adopt the budget. Is that, is that correct, Raina?
That is correct.
So tonight, we're looking at the budget that has been, draft budgets that's been sent to us. And we're supposed to give direction to the staff. At this point, the staff has provided us with a budget that includes a, a, a transfer of funds for one-time cost at this point. And you, and using the, the ARPA funds accordingly to, to do, to do that.
Well, there were two, there was multiple things being, that was being advanced and I'm not, I, I think there were different scenarios that were being advanced. So I, I think it's, it's important to be clear on which one you're talking about.
So I can try and clarify what the, the recommendation is that we reduce the general fund spending without making the contribution to SURF. So that saves $70,000 from the general fund. Recommendation would be that we use ARPA funds to make that contribution to SURF or to buy that vehicle. You know, you can figure out where you want that money to flow. But it essentially allows us to purchase the vehicle, not draw down the SURF reserves and not have the general fund contribution. That's one piece. Okay. Save $70,000 in the general fund. There is a, that leaves a $37,139,000 problem in the general fund. The recommendation is that that be, that budget balancing measure be handled via a transfer from pandemic recovery or, or ARPA funds. That's the second component. The, the third component is a series of largely one-time or with the goal of one-time expenditures of about $250,000 to $270,000, which includes a senior accountant. It includes a digitizing project and it includes a, an upgrade on some cybersecurity IT systems. I'll chuck in now, if you would like to, another $30,000, $40,000 for an organizational assessment. There was an extra $35,000 in the 270. I think it's still, if we focused on 140,000, I mean, 400,000 or so transfer from ARPA, that would be our recommendation. That would also include bridging the gap in the streetlight fund, which has a $20,000 deficit. So that, that is the scenario that is recommended at this point with what gets funded from the pandemic recovery reserve, which is a total of about $400,000 and balances the budget, allows us to purchase, make sure that we purchase the police vehicle, gets us some of those one-time pieces, et cetera. That's the budget recommendation at this point. Did that help?
Is that is that delineated anywhere? I think that is on page two twenty nine of the document.
It is um in a couple of places, but uh it is on page um in the budget document itself. It is Catherine is gonna put up the summary chart. It's also on page thirty two of the budget document. I don't, I'm sorry, have the PDF.
Yeah, that's two twenty.
The full table, uh Catherine.
Cause on this.
Don't you have the summary table? I'm sorry. I don't mean to talk over you. I apologize.
No, that's fine. On on this one in in uh page thirty one of the document, or sorry, page internal reference, page thirty one and PDF page two twenty eight. Um, when you're talking about the vehicle, it actually doesn't, it says not to fund the SURF, which is different than what you had just mentioned. And it does say that this expense could be funded, but it it doesn't have that as a recommendation. So I I just wanna, that's what I'm saying. I think there's multiple scenarios being presented. So it's before.
So um Catherine, if you can go ahead, I think to, this is not the chart I want. It's like two slides ahead, maybe. Um, no, no. Um, okay, uh, why don't we do it this way? I know we're all like completely exhausted, and I know exactly what I want. Um, and it's right here. So Catherine, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen, if that's okay. Uh, rather than you trying to determine what it is that I'm trying to think of. Um, okay. I'm assuming that you can only see this table and not.
Eighty nine.
Yeah, there are eighty nine. Uh. Uh, yeah. So um the um use of the pandemic recovery reserve seventy thousand to replenish the five oh two SURF fund, right? So um if we, the the recommendation is don't make the seventy thousand contribution, buy it from the SURF reserve. This would replenish the SURF reserve so that we don't lose any ground in terms of what's in there. That's one piece of ARPA funding. Um, the uh um uh other pieces are this isn't a really good summary of it. I apologize. Um. Well, you can see the two seventy. So let's be clear on the two seventy. That's the the one more one time pieces. Um, the uh um recommendation for the pandemic recovery reserve is this seventy thousand that's on the first line of that chart, which basically says, okay, we're gonna buy the police vehicle without making a general fund contribution. Our choices are buy it just from the SURF balance and don't don't replenish the SURF balance or replenish the SURF balance with um pandemic recovery reserve. I think since we have the pandemic recovery reserve, it would be good to keep the balance up in that SURF fund. Um, but so that's one piece. The other is um uh about thirty seven thousand in the general fund as a budget stabilization and twenty thousand for street lighting. So that gets you the approximately a hundred and thirty, um slightly different makeup than what's in that table.
Uh, yeah. So that, yeah, the budget stabilization is like all the operational stuff. The unmet needs is what we're characterizing as one time.
Yes.
And then and then down below is the summary of fund balance that would that would result.
Yes. So that's the recommendation.
I'm okay with this recommendation.
Um, you you'll have another bite at the apple on the twenty first. Um, if there's enough of a I mean, I, you know, you could just not take any action, and I'll just bring that back, and you can chew on it between now and the twenty first and and ultimately, yes, on the twenty first, you are going to be asked to take action to either approve the recommendations or not approve the recommendations and make other choices in the budget. Um, and I think there's been a lot of good discussion about what all some of the other, you know, options are. I will also remind everyone that um any decision that the council makes um on the twenty first to adopt the budget is not an irrevocable decision for the entire fiscal year, right? This is, this is a good start to the fiscal year, right? We will continue to work on all of these items, and we will continue to, particularly if we can do an organizational assessment. We may have significant recommendations at mid-year that allow for some restructuring. So I I not to diminish at all the importance of the need to make the decision on the twenty first, but I also don't want to overblow the importance of the decision that we make on the twenty first um that when the council adopts the budget. Um, it 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 really isn't irrevocable, right? This is not, this is, this is not, you know, set in concrete at this point. It is um allows us to move forward with a plan for the year that we can continue to work on. And so I just, I wanna maybe I don't know.
Does it make sense to have a?
On the waters a little on that.
To have a vote regarding the the table as presented, you you just present on page one eighty nine of the document uh to see where we stand about the recommendation that that exists from the staff.
That is certainly something uh you could do. Um, that that would give clear direction from the majority of the council. The council will still, we will still bring it back. It will not be an adopted budget. It will simply be direction for what gets included in the hearing on the twenty first.
So if there's a desire to have a motion regarding table as presented on page one eighty nine of the agenda uh that has just presented by uh Raina in her report. Um, that's something that they could, we could have right now and 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 go to a roll call vote to give her some direction for our next meeting.
Okay, a motion to approve the table as written.
I'll second.
Janet, we have a first and a second. Could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Diaz.
Unmute myself. Yeah.
Councilmember Juan.
No.
Councilmember Wolf.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tillman.
Yes.
Mayor Cloven.
And with that, uh, the direction has been given to our staff to move forward, and we'll look forward to seeing what happens next on the twenty first. Given the fact it's eleven seventeen, I am uh requesting that we move uh a review of item number nine C, the master fee schedule until June sixteenth, if that makes sense, or June twenty fourth.
June twenty first.
Twenty twenty first. I'll get my my days mixed up. Um, so with that, uh, that I'm going to move to the twenty first.
We have to take a motion on that.
Can we also, if that's the pleasure, just make sure there's no one from the public who is not able to speak to it on the twenty first?
Let me get some clarification. Mala, do we need to have a motion to move it to this to the twenty first, or can it be just done at at this time?
We we can. I don't think this was specifically publicized. Is that correct, Raina, other than?
This wasn't a public hearing, so it doesn't have to be continued. Uh, but just maybe um ask if there's any public comment that can't be made on the twenty first.
So uh if there is any public comment on item number nine C, which is a review of the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty three master fee schedule, and if you'd like to raise your hand regarding this, I know it'd be a good time to do so, and you'd have three minutes to talk on that.
Eric Cloven, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Thank you, Jen. That's much appreciated. With that, a public comment on this particular item nine C is closed, and we will move this to um our meeting on June twenty first. That ends item number nine. We're gonna move to item number ten, which is closed session for which there is none. Then we're gonna move to item number eleven, council items to be uh for request for future meetings. Are there any uh items for request for future meetings?
Well, the only thing I want to request is that an organizational analysis. I don't know if there needs to be a further discussion item or part of the budget, whatever your pleasure is.
Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. Much appreciated. I see Councilmember Wolf.
Yes, I want to reiterate a uh a request I had uh uh either earlier in the year, maybe it was late last year, to make sure that we run the fountain for nine eleven.
Thank you, Councilmember Wolf. Any other items of future discussion?
And are we meeting on the sixteenth or aren't we?
I believe that based on your robust stick-to-itiveness, we do not need to meet on the sixteen.
Yay.
Um, I am going to request nine of future um discussion, and we'll figure out when it's appropriate. Um, in the goal setting section, we missed a this, an item which I really would like to discuss, which is the review of our city vision and values. When I looked at our budget, um, I it it was pretty darn evident that that there are some very specific things that we say who we are and what we value. And um I would like to review that and make sure that we're still on track and and calling that what we vision and what we value. So that's for a future item of discussion. If there are no other items for item number eleven, item number eleven is closed. Do not leave, because we need to go to the GAD discussion. Um, so at item number twelve is adjourned at eleven twenty one PM. This meeting is adjourned, and we will move on to the next item, uh which is the GAD discussion, and we'll break him back open.
And we cannot leave without listening to my golden tones again.
I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, we'll call to order the geological hazard abatement district. At what time did we say it was? Eleven twenty one. And would Janet, please call the roll.
Board Member Tillman.
Here.
Board Member Juan.
Here.
Board Member Cloven.
I'm here.
Vice Chair Wolf.
I'm here.
Chair Diaz.
Present and accounted for. All right, now the next item is public comment. And do we have anybody on the uh queue there, Janet? I don't think I see anybody.
Chair Diaz, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Thank you. We'll close the uh public comment. We'll move on to the consent calendar, which is basically the approval of the minutes from the March fifteenth meeting.
I'd move approval.
I'll second.
Approved, uh moved by Juan, seconded by Tillman. Uh, please call the roll.
Board Member Tillman.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Public comment.
What?
We need to ask whether there's any public comment on the consent.
Is there any public comment on this item before we vote?
Chair Diaz, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
All right, and I'm closing public comment. Thank you very much. Now we can call for the vote.
Board Member Tillman.
Hi.
Board Member Juan.
Hi.
Board Member Cloven.
Hi.
Vice Chair Wolf.
Hi.
Chair Diaz.
Yes. All right. Thank you very much. Item three A is closed. Move to item four, which is public hearing. We have none, so there's, that's done. We move to item five A, which is a action and action item relative to the presentation and consolidate, excuse me, consideration of the resolution to approve the proposed Oakhurst Geological Hazard Abatement District annual report for the fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty three, and to set a public hearing to be held on July nineteenth, twenty twenty two, uh to consider the levy of the corresponding real property tax assessments in fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty three. City engineer or is it the district engineer? I don't know.
It's the district general manager, but I am not.
Oh, excuse me.
General manager. Um, but I'm gonna do do this very quickly. Our our city engineer slash general manager is um on the call and is happy to um uh participate um if there are any questions, but um my uh recommendation is that we don't have to have a presentation this evening. There can be a presentation at the public hearing. What action is required of the GAD board this evening is that they consider and think, please approve the resolution that um indicates that the public hearing will be set for July nineteenth, at which point we will have a presentation that evening. Uh, a full presentation on the budget. All the materials are in the packet. Uh, and with that, if there are, if there's a desire to hear anything about the specifics, please let us know. Otherwise um we would be grateful for a uh resolution to set the public hearing, so we can talk about it on July nineteen.
Thank you. Okay, uh, let's open a public hearing and get this moving here. Is there anybody out there uh that wishes to speak on this item? Janet.
Chair Diaz, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Excellent. Public hearing is closed on this item. We'll bring it back to the uh district for uh motion and uh consideration and moving forward.
Move approval to uh the next meeting.
Second.
Moved by Cloven, seconded by Wolf. Please call the roll.
Board Member Tillman.
Hi.
Board Member Juan.
Hi.
Board Member Cloven.
Hi.
Vice Chair Wolf.
Yes.
Chair Diaz.
Yes. Thank you. Item five A is closed and moved on. We'll now go to item six, which is board items for future requests. Anybody have anything?
I reiterate my same request for the past three years.
And would you would you kindly repeat that?
I I will repeat it because I know what it is, and that's to have a schedule of district activities. Um, so we can communicate better about what the district is doing and when they are doing it. And um I will say our uh wonderful new city engineer, I had a conversation with him about this uh the other day, and um he has already moved forward to set a meeting for us uh right after the meeting of the nineteenth to start uh the active work for FY twenty three, which will include putting together that um calendar and schedule. So uh I we are gonna get action on that now.
Excellent. Thank you. Anybody else? The silence is deafening. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, and that appears to conclude the uh Oakhurst Geological Hazard and Abatement District Meeting of June seventh. And we're closing this meeting at eleven twenty seven PM. Thank you so much, and we all look forward to seeing you in the future. When do we, when is that? That's, is it the sixteenth or the twenty first?
That is June twenty first at six PM for Planning Commission interviews.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night.